Good evening. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission at 7:00 on, what is it, November 8th, 2023. Could our clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Commissioner Furman.
Here.
Commissioner Grabby-Loonis.
Here.
Commissioner Ketner.
Whoops.
Here.
Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Peters. Commissioner Peters has informed me that she's unavailable this evening.
Thank you. So we have a quorum, and item number three is it's labeled a study session, but we're going to get a presentation on the 40 West Art Line Framework for the Framework Plan presentation, I guess. Go ahead and introduce yourself and make the presentation. Thank you.
What's up, Paul? Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you so much for allowing us some time on your agenda tonight. I'm Alexis Moore. I'm a principal planner in the city's Comprehensive Planning and Research Division. I'm the project manager on the 40 West Art Line Framework Plan Project, and I'm joined by Meredith Wunskowski, who will join me up at the podium in just a minute. Meredith is the lead consultant on the project team from Livable City Studio. We're really, really excited to be here tonight. For those of you who've been following this project, you know that this has been in the works for many, many years. We presented to the Planning Commission on May 24th of this year at a study session to share background on the history of the art line and the framework plan process, the community input we had received to date, and next steps. I know not everybody on the commission was at that meeting, so we would like to revisit a little bit of that history tonight, just to make sure that everybody has that background context and information. We shared a draft of the plan and the memo with the Lakewood Planning Commission two weeks ago on October 25th with an opportunity to review the draft at that time and provide any questions or comments leading up to this meeting. And I'm just letting the commission know that I did not receive any comments or questions on the draft plan ahead of time. And in the memo, we noted that the intent of the meeting tonight would be to review the draft with all of you and provide an opportunity for any questions, additional discussion, in hopes that you would recommend moving it forward to a regular meeting, hopefully on December 6th, to consider the plan for adoption as a comprehensive plan amendment. So with that, I will go ahead and get into the presentation if I might have to shift over here. We'll do a little bit more of the introduction on the project team who helped develop this framework plan. And as I mentioned, I'll share some of the background and the history of the 40 West Art Line and the project context. I will hand it off to Meredith to share more detail on outreach and community engagement, both leading up to tonight and in past years for the development of the framework plan. And Meredith will also give an overview of the key recommendations and orient everybody to the plan. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read it and review it, but just to orient everybody to kind of where we're going, what the direction from the community has been. And I will wrap it up with next steps and open it up for any questions. I've already introduced myself and Meredith. In addition, we have a really diverse and skilled set of internal staff members who have been involved on what we call our Art Line Project Team over the past year, meeting monthly, includes representation from a number of departments within the city with expertise in planning, economic development, transportation, engineering, trails, parks, and open space, of course, arts and culture as well. We also have representation from the 40 West Arts District and the Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District, as well as the West Colfax Community Association on the project team. The Livable City Studio team includes Meredith, as well as Todd Wunskowski, who has been a skilled urban designer, landscape architect, planning team. And Todd has primarily been involved with the implementation tools piece of this project, the design standards and guidelines, and also working with Tracy Weil, a well-known local artist in the community in the Denver metro area. And we were really lucky to work with two community connectors on the development of the framework plan, Brenda Harule with Chicana Humanities and Arts Council, and Reverend Ruben Rodriguez with Mount Air Christian Church. And both of those individuals were paid members of the project team who have a lot of connections in the communities around the art line, and they were instrumental in helping us to connect with and engage with a lot of diverse populations in the community. You've all probably seen this map at one point or another. This, just to provide some geographic context for the project area, the art line is indicated this is the current route. It's in green, literally painted on the ground, four miles long, along the West Colfax Avenue and W Line Light Rail in northeast Lakewood, in the heart of the state-certified 40 West Arts Creative District, roughly between Sheridan and Wadsworth Boulevards. And I think, again, it's really important to, before we start talking about the future of the art line, to understand where the idea originated and how this has come to be and how we've gotten to the point of having this framework plan. It really is rooted in the community. Many years ago, about 12 now, we were working with residents in the Two Creeks neighborhood, planning for the Lamar Station area on the W Line Light Rail. And the community really had this idea of creating an arts district in this area. And this planning effort really launched the nonprofit 40 West Arts District that came out of this effort. It also, the plan, which was adopted by city council in 2012, made a number of recommendations for infrastructure improvements, providing better connectivity to the light rail stations and parks and open spaces in the area. One of the big ideas that came out of this process was this concept of an arts loop, which has now become the 40 West Art Line. That arts loop vision was literally to paint this green line on the ground, to connect the parks in the neighborhood with transit and historic resources, buildings, neighborhood shops, restaurants, schools. This area of Lakewood is really lacking in terms of parks and open space compared to other areas of Lakewood that are more affluent and more recently developed. And so this idea for an arts loop, I kind of love this idea of kind of make every doorway a trailhead, that it provides access to community members in this area to just walk or bike out their door and embrace and enjoy their neighborhood and beautify it and activate it through arts and creative placemaking and take these kind of limited acreages that we have of parks and open space in this neighborhood, but really enhance them and make them something special and unique. And the arts loop concept addresses a lot of these goals that you see here that are included both in this plan as well as many other adopted city plans for this area. So with that, kind of the seeds planted for this arts loop idea, we continued to chip away implementing the plan and in 2016, applied for a prestigious grant from the National Endowment for the Arts, their Our Town Grant Program, which, as you can see here, is a really great mission of transforming communities into lively, resilient, and beautiful places with arts at their core. We were awarded at the top of the range of the grant funding to implement this art line project. And over the next two years, we worked with literally thousands of community members through surveys and walking and biking and outreach events to ultimately launch, five years ago this past June, the 40 West Art Line with over 70 yard installations created by dozens of artists and many community volunteers. The project has received a lot of recognition, awards since that time, and it's really been sustained since then through kind of a loose partnership with some of those project team members I mentioned. And we've been very fortunate in pursuing future and additional grants that have helped to sustain the art line and continue to help us move it forward. This just gives you kind of an idea of some of the experiences on the art line, as well as some of the collaboration and partnerships that we've had in bringing the art line to life. One of the big goals of the plan, as I mentioned, is really encouraging opportunities for people to get out and walk and bike and enjoy their neighborhood and their community. And to that end, thanks, Paul. We've been monitoring the number of people walking and biking along the art line since before it opened to just this year. I don't have the data yet for this year, but as you can see, we have seen a significant increase in the number of people who are out enjoying and walking and biking along the art line over the past five, six years. Just last year, the most recent count data that we have available, we estimated over a quarter of a million people walking and biking on the art line annually. This information is all available in the documents on the project website as well. Well, shoot. There we go. As I mentioned, the art line has not had its own plan until now, but we do have many adopted plans that recommend it, envision it, as well as policy and other guiding documents. But our project partners have long recognized the need that we need something to help direct us and secure future funding and implementation opportunities for the art line going forward. To that end, these are some of the needs and goals that are addressed through the development of this framework plan, and I'll just highlight a few for you. I think I've alluded to the fact that thousands of people and community members have been involved in this, creating this vision for the art line to this point. And we felt like it was really important to have a place where we can document that information and that vision, and to help understand what the priorities are for the community in terms of the many, many needs to continue to maintain what has been built and to continue to build upon it and implement what we've talked about hopefully becoming the longest continuous arts experience in Colorado. And so to have a document that helps to establish the priorities for implementation that we can use to continue to secure future funding and grant opportunities. The plan also helps us to look at all the collaborative partnerships in the area and the folks that we can work with to implement these recommendations, from our nonprofit partners to CDOT during the development of the West Colfax Safety Project and how we can have, meet shared goals through this plan and other efforts in the area. I think another really important element of the plan is there is a lot of public investment happening in there, the safety project on Colfax, but many other infrastructure projects, as well as a lot of private investment that's happening, especially around the Lamar Station. And we, as staff, really need something that we can point to to tell the private development community, as well as our public funding partners, what the vision is for that green line treatment, for the streetscape treatment, so that we can make sure that we're all working toward achieving this overall vision of developing the art line. So with that, we are very excited that last year, we applied for and received a grant from the Denver Regional Council of Governments to develop this 40 West Art Line Framework Plan. The two big elements of the project include the overarching vision document that you are reviewing tonight. It also funded the development of implementation tool in the form of design standards and guidelines for the 40 West Art Line. And as I mentioned when we met with you in May, that project will go through a different process, as established through city ordinance, in terms of a design review commission that's appointed by city council that will, has been working very closely with the stakeholders and consultants team to develop the draft guidelines, and then moving that forward to city council for adoption. So through a competitive bid process, we selected Livable City Studio to help us navigate this, and I will turn it over to Meredith to share more detail on the outreach process and the plan itself.
All right. Thank you, Alexis, and hello, everyone. So I'm going to kind of go through the, a little bit of the background, kind of the schedule, the process, and then I'll get into the details of the plan and some highlights of what, what came out of the process. So we started this back last fall, so just over a year ago, really kind of doing some additional analysis, looking at all the past work that's been happening. And, you know, really through kind of late this winter, I guess really early this year and through now, we've kind of been working through the framework plan. Concurrently, there's been this effort for implementation tools, which is the design standards and guidelines. You know, the key part here, and I'll get into this in the next few slides, is all the work that we did with community outreach that really grounded this plan and got the feedback along the way to make sure that, you know, we were hearing, we were listening right, and, and people could kind of see what they shared and some of their ideas come to fruition in this plan. So we created this Existing Resources and Community Input Summary Document. This was kind of one of the early steps that we did, starting last fall. And really what this does is it documents kind of all the, you know, and the incredible amount of the past work that's been done and the community input, a lot of it that Alexis went over, you know, thousands if they have been involved in this since 2011, and it was really important to kind of capture all that work and all that feedback in one place. It also includes the input from the framework plan process. This is kind of a living document at this point, and there's a, there's a Spanish summary of the plan that's also in line, which was some feedback we received. So we got that online as well. And in that document is this graphic, and by no means why go into all these details, but you can see here just the tremendous amount of work that has happened since 2011 that has really kind of helped shape the art line and where we are today. I just want to highlight the, the seven kind of takeaways that are in that Existing Resources document. And, you know, I think these are really the consistent themes that have been heard since the very beginning and have served kind of as the foundation of the work and the framework plan, and also kind of the themes that we have continued to hear through this process. So a little bit more about the outreach for the framework plan process. You know, the art line is long, right? There's a lot of areas, there's, there's people that are invested and interested in the community or in the art line kind of as a whole, but also in the different kind of areas and the segments, which I'll get into in a minute, of the art line. We held a lot of different outreach, open houses that targeted, you know, everyone in the surrounding area. We did specific events, you can see in that map, that targeted specific areas along the art line, so we could get some more detailed feedback in key locations. We had the website, a bilingual survey, a lot of stakeholder meetings, thousands of postcards mailed, and really, you know, to get that outreach and engagement and the feedback through the process. We also met with a number of community groups and other small group meetings, key stakeholders in the process to really help inform the direction of this. And, you know, folks like Remcad, Metro West Housing Solutions, that were really important in some of, some of the recommendations in the plan. And just a few highlights of what we heard. We heard a lot about the visibility of the green line, which I'll talk about a bit. People were, wanted to make sure that, you know, you could see it all times of day and wanting kind of a long-term sustainable solution for that, because obviously the paint has a hard time holding up long-term. Maintenance came up, obviously related to the green line. People were really excited about opportunities to connect through the Remcad property as well. So what I'm going to go through now is actually kind of the recommendation, the ideas within the plan document itself. And so this slide just highlights the actual kind of outline of the overall plan, what's in the document. I'm certainly not going to go into some of the background and introduction stuff, but I'm going to really focus on that strategic framework section and some of the highlights of the recommendations in those six segments. So the vision and goals, you know, this was, this came about through the process, you know, obviously kind of building on the past work, that this is really the public art and creative placemaking experience that connects all the neighborhoods, transit businesses, and so forth. I'm not going to read all the vision plan, but I do want to highlight these four goals that came out through the process, again, you know, based on the feedback that we heard to create kind of vibrant art and public realm experiences. Manageable smaller loops came up multiple times, right? That people don't really experience the art line as one or all at one time, but rather they go to different segments and different areas and kind of experience it that way. So that really kind of shaped how we started to think about this. That transformative destinations were really important, that people wanted a place to go and, you know, experience the art line, but also kind of go along it. And that this needs to be a long-lasting community amenity. We need to think about the long-term kind of sustainable future of the art line. And building upon that, we had these six strategies, kind of, again, you know, these are overarching that really feed into all areas of the art line. The different segments that I'll get into, you'll see kind of these icons come up on some of the future lines. But just to highlight these strategies, you know, densifying public art is an important one, right? How we think about locating and densifying public art, so it really creates that experience. Making sure we're integrating with development and thinking about what the art line is and the future development along it. Mobility and connectivity, you know, improving those connections, making sure people can safely and comfortably navigate the art line, creating programming and destinations, and then certainly emphasizing a sense of identity. So as I've mentioned, this idea of creating smaller, more manageable loops, this is one of the really kind of big ideas that came out of the art line in that we created these six distinct segments, you know, based on the existing character of the area, the destinations, how people experience the art line as well. But what you might notice in this map is that it's different from the map that exists, has existed in the past, in that the dash lines are proposed new locations. So in some locations, it's that we're taking it to both sides of the street, so we're getting that experience along both sides of Harlan or both sides of Lamar and Colfax. But you can also see the future segment that we've identified through Remcad. And so I'm going to talk about each of those segments just in a little bit more detail. So starting with Aviation Park on the west side, you know, this area has a lot of kind of mobility and challenges, sidewalks, things like that. And so some of the key ideas that came out of this were around those mobility improvements along Reed Street, the intersection improvements at Reed and 17th, and really thinking about how we can make that an experience, activating it through art, especially kind of related to the utilities in that area. And there are more, you know, recommendations and ideas, but I'm not going to be able to get to all of them tonight. Moving into the Colfax Core segment, this, obviously, a lot of this work is aligned with the Colfax Safety Project, so you can see the ideas about the streetscape and the improved crossings. But the big idea that came out of here was the creating a hub at the 40 West Arts Plaza. And that is, this is a priority project coming out of the plan, and you can see here what that, that vision, what that concept really starts to look like. Colfax is kind of on the bottom of the image there, so tying into those improvements and creating this really vibrant arts plaza between the building and Colfax, kind of wrapping around the building with trees, art, color, activation, and providing this really great destination along the art line. Moving down to Lamar, obviously, there's a lot of development happening down here, so some key recommendations around, you know, integrating with private development, looking at the streetscape, creating gateways. Another priority project that came out of the, the plan process and is located along Lamar is this idea of creating, making Lamar Street more of this art corridor, kind of street gallery and festival street. And so you can see what that, that vision looks like here, how the green line runs along the sidewalk, you have enhanced streetscape, you have, you know, banners, signage, and how that starts to interface with the private development, creating this really vibrant destination along Lamar. Moving to the Mount Air Park segment, this has a number of recommendations, but the, another priority that came out of this was densifying the W Line bike path with art. And so this really looks at how we do that with the future brickyard development. And so you can see this image starts to envision what that could look like, again, kind of densifying art along here, thinking about that development and making this a really great pedestrian and bike spine, obviously. The Walker Branch Park segment, this one, you know, starts to integrate some of the future thinking around the master plan for Walker Branch and how we, you know, connect people to the park, some key improvements along Harlan Street for getting people safely across, but also kind of activating it within the park itself and really bringing the art line to life. And then the new future segment that we've identified is through Remcad, you know, a really great opportunity here to create kind of those loops here so that they can be kind of, you know, smaller, more manageable walking loops. The, the people living at Creekside were really excited about this opportunity, and we've been connecting, you know, and coordinating with Remcad throughout this process, you know, and walked their site, see, kind of talked through all these great opportunities with them as well. Obviously, more coordination will be needed in the future, but this is, you know, the vision to kind of create that really unique experience through the historic campus at Remcad. And then just thinking kind of more holistically about the art line too. So we broke it down in segments, there are a lot of recommendations, but we also want to think about how the art line continues to be cohesive. And so we have a number of elements and design considerations in the plan, from streetscape furnishings that you can see in the image, to treatments for the green line and how they might vary actually along the art line in different areas, and the public art and creative placemaking. These ideas become kind of that, that common thread throughout the entire art line to make sure it still feels as one. And then just quickly, the last piece around implementation, the question always is, is, you know, what are the priorities and how are, how are they going to get done? And so we have information about implementation in the, the framework plan as well. We have a matrix that goes through each and every one of those recommendations, a timeline, responsible parties, and gives detail really for kind of that, that work plan aspect of all these ideas. We have information about the art selection process and how that starts to interface with public art versus if there's private art coming online. And then organization and maintenance considerations, right? That gets into kind of staffing, long-term maintenance and funding, again, really thinking about the, the long-term future. And then just a note on regulatory considerations, because the design standards and guidelines, separate process, and, but there, there is kind of some notes in there about, about that and how it starts to relate to the framework plan.
Thank you, Meredith. And just to wrap up on our next steps and then open it up for questions and discussion, as Meredith highlighted, we've had a ton of public process and engagement. The draft plan was posted, we held an open house, sorry, September 20th, after the West Colfax Community Association meeting, and then got input from community members there, as well as posting that draft plan on the project website with opportunity for people to provide comments or ask questions after that. I think it was up for three-plus weeks. We received one comment online that was very positive and encouraging, strong connections to that hub and along the Colfax corridor, but overall, very, very positive feedback about the about the plan and the vision presented in it. Once we make the final edits, that draft plan will be posted again on the project website with an opportunity for public comment prior to the regular meeting with Planning Commission. And just to review, in terms of our process with you all, we, again, presented in May on the project, sent the memo with opportunity for feedback and review over the past couple of weeks. We are here tonight at our study session and happy to take questions, comments. As we said in the memo, we are hopeful that you would recommend that we bring this forward at the December 6 meeting, and if so, that means there's some short timelines for the packets. And therefore, we're asking if you do have any edits or comments, that you would submit them to me before November 12th so that we can incorporate them next week. And if you have additional comments after that, we can obviously still incorporate them and present that at the regular meeting and let everybody know what changes have been made since this meeting. From there, hopefully, we would move forward to planning, City Council, excuse me, in February for official adoption and then jump into really working on the implementation of the project. And with that, we'll open it up for questions. Thanks so much for your time.
Terrific. Thank you both very much. It's a very comprehensive, very well-thought-out plan, and this truly is an incredible amenity. And building on that amenity, I think, is going to be so important. I will open it up for Commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Furman?
Yes, sorry. On and off, I do, actually. No, and forgive me if I missed this piece. I recall last time that it was presented, you talked about some element of review for some of the businesses that go in, especially, was it along Lamar? Is that, would that be part of the regular design review, or they have their own design review, Forty West Art Line have its own design review oversight? How would that?
I think if I understand your question, no, that's okay. I think the design standards and guidelines will regulate properties along Lamar Street, and we've been working with the Design Review Commission as well as a group of stakeholders who include the developers that are working on projects along Lamar Street and the brickyard to get their input into this process as well. So that would, again, be separate from this kind of visionary, big-picture plan, but is, has been a part of this process to make sure that we're getting their input, too.
Yeah, that was my question. Thanks.
Commissioner Grablyonis?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for the presentation. And I agree that this is an amazing amenity, and it's a great thing that we have in Lakewood. I guess my question is in regards to the future art line plan. Is this, and I might have missed it, like a five-year plan kind of thing, and have there been other studies done for what it might look like 10 or 20 years down the line?
This plan is probably a 10-plus-year plan. If you've kind of seen the matrix, the implementation matrix, we've broken it down into the timeframe of short, medium, long. I don't remember the exact year breakdown on that, but I think the longer term is 10-plus years. And so just kind of for reference, you know, I think the REMCAD improvements would be probably a longer-term implementation, just because there are so many logistics and funding and engineering considerations on that route and alignment. But I think this hopefully is a visionary document that does have that really long-term vision, and if we can achieve all of this in 10, 15 years, then we'll do another plan and figure out where the art line goes from there. I think that's the exciting thing about a project like this, that it can be really dynamic and evolving based on what the community wants and needs at that time.
Yeah, and it seems like there is other, there's opportunities for other businesses, not necessarily on the line, to be involved with the art line, right? Like the, I'm forgetting the name of it, but there's the glass-blowing place down Colfax.
Yes.
So it's a great opportunity for even those not directly on the line.
Absolutely. And I'm thinking on the name too, but that's a very cool, the Furnace Gallery in your studio? Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you to the project team. You all have obviously worked tremendously hard on this. It is a very thorough document, and this is a wonderful amenity, and I'm just really happy to see that we're putting in place a framework to continue to build on it. And, you know, the quality of the biking and pedestrian environment will continue to improve along it, the art experience continues to improve, you know, the vibrancy of businesses who want to be in this area now, I think is a really exciting aspect of it, too. So just lots of kudos. I took a bike ride around the whole thing on Sunday, knowing that's not the typical way people experience it, and not the way I've typically even experienced it, but it felt important to do, just to review this plan. And, you know, when you go through this, like at walking or biking speed, as opposed to just driving by in Colfax, it really strikes you how much art there already is, and like the plan talks so much about densifying the art. I mean, this is going to be incredible. It already is. And so, yeah, it's just, it's extremely cool all around. I did have one or two questions, I guess, that are maybe very practical things that could potentially touch the Planning Commission, not just tonight, next month, but in the future. The very last page talks about future regulatory tools and future zoning tools. The language is, you know, a couple paragraphs and bullet points, it stays super high level. In your discussions with the community and internally in the project team, you know, what are you envisioning in zoning in the area? What's not optimal about the zoning now, supporting the vision of the art line? What should be better? What should we be looking for?
That's a great question, and it is intentionally high-level at this point. I think our focus was on the design standards and guidelines in terms of kind of the regulatory piece to get that streetscape. I think that's what we feel like is most important, to make sure that we get that, as Meredith said, kind of that cohesive experience of the green line and those aesthetic treatments in place. I think that one of the things that we're working on for Lamar Street, that the zoning isn't necessarily meeting, is kind of that active uses and pedestrian, street-level experience. And so we're working on, you know, in the parameters of what we can do through design standards and guidelines to try to push that as far as we can, which is why we're also, of course, talking to developers and property owners along that corridor that we're working with on those details. I think the future zoning changes, we wanted to capture some of the potential challenges and opportunities at a high level here, with the hope that with the future comp plan update and potential zoning changes overall in the city of Lakewood, we can have something to kind of look back at related to the art line at a high level. And as we go through the comp plan process, hopefully, this will be an adopted amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, but as we're updating the current Comprehensive Plan, it can provide another opportunity for us to kind of dive a little bit deeper into that zoning question. But just kind of want to be clear that this plan at this point does not, you know, dictate any zoning changes.
Yeah, but the ongoing work of the Design Review Commission can dovetail into the comp plan to consider those things. And, yeah, so maybe that looks like even there's a zoning overlay district or something in the next zoning code that goes with the next comp plan, specific for this area, is for some sort of consistency within the loops in the corridor?
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be a great thing to discuss and consider down the road.
Yeah, okay. And you've mentioned a few times now, there's, you know, ongoing developments on Lamar Street and that you're working with the developers, so that's, of course, excellent. So what specifically have the developers committed to doing that's to the betterment of the art line and the public realm on that street? You know, right now, with, there's a couple vacant lots and some ongoing beginning incipient stages of construction, that street actually feels really desolate today compared to the vision in this document.
Agreed. And even actually, some of the pictures of when we launched the art line, it's changed a lot in five years, because properties that were there then are no longer there, and some of the fence are, those temporary installations are kind of, you know, needing to turn over and evolve. The developers that we're working with, I think, are very keen on the idea of design standards and guidelines. They have been very supportive of it. I think that they feel like that protects their investment, because they have bought into and believe in the vision of the Forty West Arts District and the art line. One of the things that we're talking about in the design standards and guidelines is requirement for public art on Lamar Street and some other areas, and that's kind of a big shift. Right now, our zoning allows for that through the enhanced development menu as an option, and to mitigate like plaza space, there's some other language in the zoning ordinance, but there's nothing that requires that. And so we feel like it's a great opportunity to support local artists and creatives and bring kind of a very context-specific feel to the art line by requiring public art. And we're not going to dictate what that public art is. The Design Review Commission won't be the deciding factor on what that public art is. It'll be a very open, transparent process with the community involved and stakeholders involved in selecting the art. We're still really working through a lot of those details. Just tangentially, you may be aware that we're also updating the city's Public Art Master Plan, and I was in a meeting today with the consultant team on that project. And if anyone's not familiar and interested, please get involved, it's really exciting, totally different effort, but updating the 2013 Public Art Master Plan, there's a survey out right now, and there's going to be some really great opportunity to provide input citywide on where you'd like to see future public art. But we have a lot of work to do on the process for public art as a whole. We don't have a 1% for the art ordinance like a lot of other municipalities do, and so we kind of bring art into the city in a variety of ways. This is one of those ways. And so I think the short answer is that the developers are interested in getting that streetscape treatment on both sides of the street, along Lamar Street. It does feel desolate right now, but there's definitely a lot in the works that I'm hopeful will help us bring this vision a little bit more to life.
Okay. And are some of those private development projects along Lamar Street, are they still early enough in the process where, you know, there's time for, you know, staff and the developer to commit to something tangible art-wise and that we have some assurance that's going to happen?
Yep. Yep, and the brickyard as well, I think, is going to be a huge shift in the whole character of that area, and hopefully in a really positive way.
Yeah, so that's great that, yeah, the partners we have in the private development sector are on board with the vision now to help this plan go forward. I'd definitely be supportive of future efforts to come back here and talk about, you know, what we can do to strengthen rules to like make this vision happen.
Great.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you. I just wanted to express excitement and appreciation for the development of this document. My only question while you guys were talking was funding for densifying public art, because it's quite expensive. And every time public art has been installed in Ward Two and Ward One, it's been such a huge effort. So that was really cool to see, just the comprehensive level that this document has come to. So I just really appreciate that, and the years attached to it. And I think one thing that this really does, and I'm incredibly supportive of everything you guys are talking about, is that it creates that sense of place in Lakewood that I think we desperately need. It's really lacking in most of the city. So, and I love that, that final page to Commissioner Buckley's point about future zoning, earmarking that as open-ended for conversation and keeping this a living document, also, I think, incredibly important, because some of that zoning forces certain heights and setbacks and things that don't fit. So I think that, I just think it's a really thoughtful document, and I appreciate all the work, and it's been exciting to watch it develop, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grablyonis, is that from an earlier light? Any other questions or comments from commissioners? I think it's a testament to the quality of the work that you have not gotten, any, you know, specific requests or suggested changes. I think it's appropriate for us to entertain a motion to set this for the next, or not the next, but the December 6th Regular Planning Commission meeting for consideration, and I'd entertain that motion.
I move that we agenda the Forty West Art Line Framework for Moving Forward, draft plan for a public hearing and a vote for approval on December?
Sixth.
Sixth.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It will be set. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you all very much.
Now, we're moving on to item four, other legislative matters, accessory dwelling unit regulations. This has obviously been a subject of an awful lot of time and consideration, and we're happy to have further discussion on it this evening. As a reminder for folks, this was, came from a council request. We had a request seeking the Planning Commission's input on how to remove barriers to accessory dwelling units within the city of Lakewood, and that happened, I think, back in March or April. We had a study session on this in August, we've had a couple of meetings on this already, we've seen a draft that's been publicly available, and now we have a revised draft that is before us today. So the first thing we're going to do is turn to public comment, and we'll invite, I will note that we've already gotten quite a few comments on Lakewood Speaks, and hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review those comments. And now, we'd be happy to take any comments from anyone in the public who has come to comment on this process or on these, on the proposed document and the issue that we have before us. Well, I don't know if we've had folks that have already signed up. Okay, thanks. Well, we'll just start with the folks that have signed up. We're going to invite you to come forward, tell us your name, and we'll give you three minutes to make any comments. I'm going to suggest we do something a little different, which is that after you've given whatever comments you would like to make, commissioners may have questions, and I would invite commissioners to ask those questions and get further detail and information from the folks that have come to provide those comments. We ask that everyone be civil, but we are here to hear your views on these subjects. So I'm going to start with Sean Hagerty, or Hagger, Hagerty, maybe? Feel free to come up to the podium, and I think, I assume the lights are working, so it'll show you when you have, I think it's green, when you have three minutes goes to yellow in the final 30 seconds, and then red. We just ask you to wrap up.
I actually didn't need to speak, but I do have two questions. The first one is, when I look through the ADU process, does it effectively transform an R1 into an R2? And the second question is, does it have any impact in terms of the other regulations in terms of basic building requirements? So I'm here primarily just looking for more information.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that.
I'm Sean Hagerty with 8231 West 14th Avenue. I didn't give you that.
Sure. Just hang on a second there. I think that the, the issue of whether the other requirements for that site would still be in effect, the only thing that's before the commission today is the changes that were listed on Lakewood Speaks. So those are specific changes to the ADU regulations. The other things remain the same, and I think that we might have a lively conversation on your other question as to whether it has that effect or not, but is there anything else you would like us to consider?
Well, I was curious with the 1,400, if I understand correctly, there's a change from 700 square feet to 1,400 square feet, and I'm just kind of curious how that interacts with the setbacks and the other requirements. Given the variety of different lots we have, that makes it somewhat difficult in terms of trying to figure out how you would do an ADU in certain areas. So once again, it's more just more information that I'm looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from any commissioners?
Thank you.
Sure.
I have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Mr. Hagerty, I'm going to drag you back. Commissioner Buckley has a question.
Sure, yeah. Explain to me some more, to all of us, some more really about your concerns about the 1,400 square feet being difficult to figure out what's capable of being designed to. The old standard was 700 square feet, and so that, we felt in previous discussions, could actually be somewhat limiting. And so the, the idea of these changes, there's things that are attached to a zoning district, you know, like the building setbacks primarily, the minimum open space requirement on the lot, that aren't changing. And so, you know, you can, those things kind of have a way of capping what you can reasonably fit anyhow. And so the 1,400 square feet was a number we kind of collaboratively chose, because it's really the uppermost end of maybe a two- or three-bedroom apartment max. But a lot of lots are still constrained by the overall lot size, the overall setbacks, the overall open space requirement on the lot. So I think you commented- overall open space requirement on the lot. So I think you commented that increasing the square footage made it possibly harder to know what could be designed of the lot. I mean, it's just a maximum. You can design something smaller still. So, I don't know, maybe that clarifies from things to you, but can you elaborate on what your concerns are about it being difficult to build on the lot because of this change in the?
Okay. Well, I grew up two blocks south of Casa Monita, and been in the neighborhood for, you know, a fair time. Anyway, probably since about '55. So, one of the questions I had was with regard to the parking requirements and the other things, it just looked like some of those lots in the older areas of Old Lakewood are very narrow, so there's not a whole lot of front streetscape. And given the narrowness of the lot and then trying to meet other parking requirements and setbacks for fences and buildings and some other things, it just looked like there was going to be some challenges. So I was wondering how that would be handled from a potential waiver standpoint, or, you know. And, once again, I'm not familiar with all of the details of what you got in there, but those were just two things where I saw there could be some challenges in terms of trying to fit things in.
Commissioner Furman. Oh, I'm sorry. Were you on? Okay. Commissioner Furman?
I mean, this is just essentially an opinion from a commissioner, but I think the hard reality is that there are lots that it wouldn't be possible to build one on. I mean, I think inevitably, since we're not changing the rules governing the setbacks within the ADUs, I think you just simply are going to have lots that you couldn't, you couldn't achieve one that would be, at least not viable in a way that was, I don't know, typical.
The other question I had, I've had some challenges with Excel in terms of gas pressure, electrification, and other things. And I'm just curious, especially in the older areas where they seem to have some problems providing current service, how that was going to interact. One of the things that a couple of individuals meant was, it sounded like you were moving toward a situation where for new construction, you might eliminate potential use of gas, require full electrification. And, for example, part of the property that I've got, we have lines that haven't been cleared of trees by Excel for the last, you know, probably 10, 12 years. And their standard for a tertiary line is that they won't clear it unless there's a complete loss of power. And since there's a law that precludes anyone else from doing anything in the tree areas, it creates other challenges. So, there are just things like that that I guess some of the older property owners have been frustrated by, you know. And a lot of that has nothing to do directly with Lakewood. It's more an Excel issue, but the low gas pressure and other things tie into that as well. So, that's where, it's just, when you start getting into the details of how you would do an ADU, how you would meet those other requirements becomes problematic. Anyway, are there any other questions? Or, and I didn't actually intend to speak. I'm just here getting information. Thank you all, but thank you for your work, and I know you spend a lot of time doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Ditson? And again, we'd ask you to say your name and stick to the three minutes if you can, but as you can see, there may be follow-up questions, so we'll get additional opportunities. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Pardon me, I had to prepare this to keep focus. I'm working on very little sleep. I'm Paul Ditson. This evening, I speak for myself as a property owner and resident of the Iber neighborhood since 1964. I've completed the Citizens Planning Academy and have been active in neighborhood and city planning efforts for over two decades. So I hope this qualifies me to provide some historical perspective on this evening's topics. The existing ADU policy incorporated in 2012 was developed with a purpose of, deliberate purpose, of limiting the scale of backyard ADUs so as to mitigate their impact on neighboring properties. This revision now represents renegotiation of that agreement, but there's been no effort, as far as I'm aware, to obtain the advice and consent of the communities that contributed to its initial development. This is not unlike the replacement of commercial zones by mixed-use categories in 2012, which led to unintended consequences such as parking densities that we've been suffering from ever since, or a lack of a specific requirement that mixed-use actually include a mix of uses. The exploitation of that loophole resulted in developments that are 100% residential, which have failed to produce the services that advocates promised would follow, and which have created parking impacts in North Lakewood neighborhoods. This proposed amendment now deserves due diligence in its wording to prevent a similar negative impact to Lakewood's established and stable neighborhoods. I'm here to say ADUs are not a bad idea, but we need a proper public advisory process as we consider revisions to the 2012 ordinance in order to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. This current amendment also lacks, as it did in 2012, the guidance of an updated comprehensive plan to direct its implementation. So again, the cart is ahead of the horse. Now, I don't oppose the concept of ADUs, and I was a cautious advocate of the idea in 2012, but I argue that ADUs are not a panacea for the affordability challenge, which I agree is very real and requires our focused attention. ADUs might contribute, but the potential for that contribution can easily be outweighed by a misapplied policy. My greatest concern is that the wording this markup goes beyond the commonly accepted principle of an ADU by redefining it really as nothing other than a full-size structure. Especially in the older areas of Lakewood, 1,400 square feet and 30-foot height would equal or dominate the existing primary structure on the property. So how is that an accessory use? As noble as this intention is, this policy seems to be a wolf in sheep's clothing. We must find a better, more focused solution to the affordability challenge. Numerous neighborhood organizations in North Lakewood have proven track records of working with developers and the city toward a fair and equitable development outcome when given the opportunity. The potential this policy has for exploitation and abuse, I think, is very real, and risks consequences which will have irreversible and devastating effects on our community, if not fairly constrained. So I ask that you give this very careful consideration.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you, Mr. Ditson. I believe, sir, were you the commenter online who remarked about the wording of the section about the on-street, off-street parking?
I did have questions about that.
Yes. Thank you. You were very astute. You caught a typo. All the references to off-street parking in that section should be references to on-street parking.
That does make more sense, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. And I think you mentioned that you were surmising that might be the case, so just wanted to assure you that that is the case. And I came here tonight prepared to offer an amendment to fix that wording. So, hopefully, we will, we will get to that after this discussion. But yeah, thank you for sharing your, sharing your other concerns. You know, some of my stance on this is informed by my personal life experience. When I was in my early twenties, the place I lived that was the lowest rent home that I've ever had in my life was essentially what we'd call an ADU. I think it was legally zoned, a duplex. You know, and there are some distinctions there. So, it is part of the solution to affordable housing. I've seen that in my own life, and I've known other people who have lived in these kind of dwellings, and it's been, it's been a good thing for them. But, you know, I have all along also wanted to do this in a way that, you know, is compatible with the neighborhood as well. So, I appreciate your other concerns. And, you know, we have wording that is in this code. I'll just, you know, maybe take the opportunity to ask you one more open-ended question. You know, you said some things about the gross floor areas. Is there, you know, anything else that's particularly troubling to you? Anything else that if you, you know, could wave your wand and ask us to do? What, what do you want to see?
Well, I don't know if this is too late in the process. I know there's been quite a bit of work done on this already, and we're rather late to the process in raising our concerns. Like you, the house that I grew up in, that I presently own, has a basement apartment. It's currently torn apart because I'm doing improvements, but it did have that, and we used it as an apartment, an ADU, if you will. My greatest concern, other than the possibility of creating basically a second full-size structure on a property that will potentially impact uses of properties around it, sustainable activities such as gardening and solar collection and backyard privacy and things like that, the size of the structure, I think, is very concerning. I think there was one other, this escapes me at the moment now.
Okay. Well, that's helpful. And I'll put out, kind of like Commissioner Furman did a few minutes ago, this is just one commissioner's opinion, mine, but this section of code, what it does not touch is any requirements for open space on a lot. And so, to the extent that our R1 zones have a minimum open space requirement on the lot, so that there is room for things like gardening and greenery, that's not changing. There is a potential for maybe things like more shadows and whatnot. You know, with Colorado's very harsh sun, we have a garden, tomatoes and vegetables and whatnot that we put in our backyard. And for years, it's been in the shade of our shed. You know, the shade's actually an amenity. It helps the garden because, you know, we can, it's actually more opportunities to grow stuff that suffers under the withering hot sun, you know, in July and August. So, because we're not messing with the open space requirements anywhere else, and, you know, that was intentional when, at least I was thinking about that, I didn't want to change any of that, I at least am not too concerned about these accessory structures that getting built, you know, crowding out and taking up too much space of greenery. And I respect that others may have other opinions, but I just want you to know that's, that is at least my thought process of it, and that we are leaving that unchanged.
If I may, I do garden myself. My father gardened and put a lot of energy into the development of the garden that is in my backyard right now. It has suffered due to a higher, relatively higher-density development that went in 15 or 20 years ago behind us and started casting shadows and required my, taking quite a bit of effort to move the garden around to try to get the sun that it required. That's the kind of impact that I've experienced directly. Getting back to the other point, if I may, the one thing that I would ask of this process, the city, et cetera, to try to do is replicate what we had as far as a public process in the 2012 instance and the comprehensive planning of 2015, where there was quite significant outreach and advisory group work between citizens and the city of Lakewood is very well done. It produced what we have right now is these ADU requirements, which we spent quite a bit, I was involved in the process, and there was quite a bit of thought put toward what is currently the regulations which address some of these concerns that we have. And I don't see that those concerns have really changed substantially.
I'll just make a clarifying comment, and then we have other commissioners. While you're a little late to this process, you're actually very early in the process. Just so you understand, and everyone understands what's going on, we had a request, we've had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, we've taken a lot of votes, we've produced a document, but we haven't passed anything yet. And if we were to pass something, that is simply a recommendation to the city council, and that is entirely another public process. So, there will be additional opportunities. Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Ditson, were, I believe, one of your comments was also regarding, as you were just talking about gardening and solar and all of that, you had some suggestions on height restrictions, detached behind the home, being kept at 15 feet, and something over a garage, maintaining that 30-foot height limitation. I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I think that that's thoughtful. And I think that that's one thing I've heard several people publicly in just conversations I've had bring up, the worry of privacy. I would be worried about privacy to my backyard. I think, you know, I do think it's something that deserves more conversation, and I appreciated the way that you really wrote all of your comments. They were really helpful and thoughtful. And I was also going to reiterate that it isn't too late. I'm glad that people are here to talk and, because really, all we're trying to do is something thoughtful and answer a problem, provide a tool to answer one of the problems that we have in Lakewood in housing. So, anyway, I would like to have further discussion regarding the height limitations based on proximity to the main home.
May I elaborate on that point just briefly?
That'd be great.
It was in discussions, as I had referred to a moment ago, through the outreach process, that this issue came up with height. And the solution that was arrived at was just a straight 30-foot height limitation. The, the theory being that with a, I think, 700-foot floor space limitation, you really can't build 700 feet with two stories. You know, it's not, it's kind of impractical. The whole purpose of having that 30-foot height was to accommodate ADUs over garages. But I, as I mentioned in my online comments, I think that there is a way that we can perhaps write the regulations so that it does both, really. It limits the height for, for the privacy concerns, but if you do have a garage with an ADU, then make a specific requirement for that.
Commissioner Kettner?
Thank you. I was wondering if you remembered, Mr. Ditson, what was the, just on a practical level, or what would you recommend for, because I agree, and the more that this document is vetted and more outreach we do prior to sending it to council, I'm sure that they would appreciate that and a smoother process going forward. Do you remember, I know, like I'm the contact for a neighborhood, I was, we post our meetings on Lakewood Speaks, but there was no specific outreach done about this meeting. Do you remember what was done?
Back then?
Yeah.
I don't know exactly how it was, how the notification went out, but there was a pretty extensive outreach to, I believe, community organizations. And I think mine came, my name came up as a result of just recently having completed the Citizens Planning Academy.
And I know that we have, you know, a list of like the registered neighborhood organizations with the city. Would, Mr. Race, would that maybe be something that the commission could consider asking staff to notify neighborhoods about this?
Right. If you're looking for additional outreach, there is a registered neighborhood organization list on the planning homepage under the Conference of Planning Group.
And if the commission desired, would it be possible to ask staff to outreach to those organizations and let them know that we're considering these changes?
We could. And we would look to the commission for some direction on that, whether it's an email, posting something to the website, and then sending an email saying, "Look at the website." There could, there could be different forms of outreach.
Thank you. Would there be anything, I mean, anything specific you would suggest?
Honestly, I was hoping for something that would more duplicate or replicate the process we went through the last time. I think that was very worthwhile and had great results. You know, the citizens advisory groups is what I'm referring to specifically. Do you want, it will not be complete, but kind of a recap of what that outreach might have been? Okay. So, at the time, the mayor wanted to be as non-political as possible, so he used the Wiki rosters from the Citizens Planning Academy. I think we had over 300 attendees. They were all offered to participate. We ended up with a group of about 60. And then we had a core group of about 30 that attended meetings all the time, and we included Planning Commission, which most of the Planning Commission had gone through that program. There were, I think, a series of three kickoff meetings to start the zoning amendment process. There were meetings scheduled for each individual ward. Some of the wards did not have good attendance at those meetings, so we actually went to, not commissioners, counselor, individual ward meetings that they had at various times throughout the week. All the, there was a website that was published going through the, through the process. I can't remember the little jingle that we had for the website. All the registered neighborhood organizations were notified. The Looking at Lakewood... The Looking at Lakewood newsletter was used every time, which took some forethought, because it comes out several times a year. Flyers, there was all kinds of handouts, and postcards and flyers and so forth, that were distributed to planning commissioners, counselors, if they went to meetings, they distributed those. They were at the community rec orgs and so forth. I know I'm missing something. But they were, it was extensive, we were actually doing the entire zoning code.
I guess along those lines, given that this isn't really writing an ordinance, it's just modifying this, I would think that maybe the intent of just notifying the people on the list that you described, or something like that, to be aware that the conversation is going on, because, again, what you were mentioning, is that this is, at this point, it's just drafting recommendations to the city council, who would then do that. So, I would, I would think that at the level of drafting the ordinance, perhaps they can decide to go back to a further degree, but I would think perhaps what we're doing, merely a notification, would be sufficient.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to provide any testimony? And again, if you don't mind, just give us your name, and we'll set you for three minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Roxy Dillon, and I recently have worked with some migrants from Venezuela who are experiencing very extreme homelessness, as are obviously some of our own citizens as well. One of the things that struck me about their living situation, because, you know, once they've arrived and they're allowed to stay in a shelter for a certain period of time, was their ability to really work together, and as like two couples, to find a location to live. And so, that's why I'm here, is in kind of support of increasing the 700 square feet, because I really think that that amount of space, and allowing for more than one bedroom, allows families to bring their resources together and be able to afford a place that they may not have been able to afford, in a regular two-bedroom, and say, in an apartment complex. Because ADUs can be sometimes cheaper, if they're basement apartments, you know, there's not as much light, but it is something that, it makes them, you know, able to have a place to live that's affordable. Not just for migrants, but for, you know, single parents, that's also something that would be helpful for them, where, you know, two parents could come together and share a basement apartment, and be able to live affordably. You know, it's really difficult for a lot of single parents out these days, you know, with the housing not being very affordable. So, that's just, I just wanted to give my support for increasing that from 700. I'm not sure that it necessarily has to be as much as 1,400, but definitely, you know, at least 1,000, 1,100 would accommodate at least two bedrooms, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Kettner, is your light just on from the last time, or did you have a question?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's on.
Now it's off. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to provide any comments for the commission on this issue?
[inaudible]
Oh, please.
My name is Trish Kelly.
Well, make sure you say it into the microphone, so...
I don't talk very loud to begin with.
That's fine.
But my name's Trish Kelly. I'm a Realtor, and I live in Paul's neighborhood, and he's been very instrumental in keeping our neighborhood, trying to keep it the way it has been since, you know, we've moved in. So, I really appreciate everything that he's done, and I agree with everything he says all the time, always. So, whatever he says, I stand behind 100%, but especially when it comes to these ADUs, you know, our neighborhoods have these big lots, and they have the privacy that people want, and when someone starts building additional dwelling units in too many, in such a small space, your value goes down. You might have more income property, but you have less value to the property itself. And so, I hear over and over again from my clients, saying, "I don't want anybody looking down over me, I don't want to have anybody right on top of me, I want to be able to have my space and my area, and I don't want my neighbors intruding on that, and building these garages that are, that have ADUs above them, or a 30-feet limit, or 1,400-feet," you know, "you're bringing more people in, and you're ruining the quiet and private enjoyment that people have the right to next door." And so, that's what I just wanted to say, is that there are other ways to look at it, and people still need a place to go, where you have a big, open lot, and you don't have a lot of people around you. So, Lakewood has always been that way, I personally want to keep it that way, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Buckley?
Yes, thank you. Somebody such as Paul Rice or another commissioner, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is the case in most of our R1 zone districts, that the maximum permitted height of a single-family home is 35 feet. Am I remembering that correctly?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Right, so, the limitation of 30 feet within these ADU requirements is actually a further restriction upon and reducing the height, that a single-family home, by right, not an ADU, could already build a new house, that anyone has the right to scrape a home and build a new home 35 feet tall on virtually any R1 lot in Lakewood. I understand your concerns, and, you know, the concerns of people you've worked with to help them buy homes, of desire for privacy. You know, we've heard, my fellow commissioner, O'Neill, you know, express sympathy for that tonight, you know, that's a real issue. But at the same time, from your perspective, I'd like to know, what is the difference between a potential neighbor who is living in a 30-foot-tall ADU versus a potential neighbor living in a, you know, a neighbor living in a 30-foot-tall ADU versus a neighbor that's just a single-family home that's very large, that's 35 feet tall?
Well, I don't know that there's a difference necessarily in that case, but what I'm talking about is, like, we have a, we have a little tiny house on our lot, we have a huge lot, we could, we have a grandfathered ADU in there, but it's small. So, if somebody's going to come in, we sold the property, and they came in and tried to make that ADU 1,400 square feet, it's going to be bigger than the houses, you know, so, and then the more people are going to come in, and then the more access is going to be getting through the driveway, and you're going to have to make a bigger driveway. So, just in our circumstances, and our neighbors, neighbors are the same way, there's two people living on each side of us, if you add more dwelling units, and there's going to be four, six, eight, I don't, depends on how big you make it, but if it's 1,400 square feet, how many people can you squeeze in there? Are there going to be limits? I don't know. I don't know all the details of the, what's trying to be passed. All I know is that, from my perspective, and from a lot of people's perspective, we don't want to have, be crowded all in in one spot, we want to have half-acre or an acre lot, and just keep it to the two people who live there. And that's how it's been, and that's what we purchased, and that's how we want to keep it. So, if it's a R2 zoning, then I think that we need to limit it to how big it can be. I don't know the answer to your question, honestly, because I don't know, 35 feet versus 30 feet is going to make a big difference. But it's just having someone behind us build a huge garage, and it's fine, because it's pretty far away, but it, like, when you look back at our property, you see, all you see is their garage above and beyond our property. It doesn't bother us, it's just the aesthetics of it is, you know, it changes things. And so, I personally want to keep things the same, so...
Commissioner Kettner?
To Commissioner Buckley's point and question, I believe it's 30 feet if it's detached. Is that right, Mr. Rice?
Yes, over a detached garage.
If it's attached where these baysways have been built, that it looks like it's detached, but it's actually attached, it was allowed to be 35 feet?
Correct.
So, and it's, I know it's only five feet, but it is something that, and yes, they could tear down the whole thing and build a new thing 35 feet tall, so I just, but just, as far as the technical point.
Appreciate it.
And I don't know if this question is for you, but it's come up a couple of times about, like, basement ADUs and like a basement apartment. At what point, if I wanted to, I mean, I did, I had somebody living in my basement for a while, I didn't file for an ADU with the city, and it was less than 700 square feet, so I know it qualified, but at what point, so these very well may exist, correct, Mr. Rice, where we just don't have document, you know, at what point would somebody have to file with the city?
Right. The, you are correct, there were zone districts that existed in Jefferson County before Lakewood Incorporated, they were a little more liberal than the zoning districts we have now, and so, you may have a lot of existing two-family units that aren't necessarily grandfathered or comply with zoning code, because they haven't been established. So, ADU standards would apply for new, or somebody actually coming in and converting an existing structure, i.e. their basement, to a unit. So, the standards would, I would say, new or remodel.
So, if somebody wanted to rent their basement to a family, they could do that, currently?
Right. I mean, there's no standards that are regulating.
They would only have to, if they did some major construction, then they may have to do an ADU permit with the city?
Right.
But barring that, they could still rent that basement apartment, or basement?
There are probably some issues with renting your basement apartment to someone, if it's, if it, you know, if there's no, like, legal proof that it was established, we get complaints on that occasionally as well. So, there could be some issues. If you go out and start renting your apartment to someone that wasn't there before, and then your neighbor complains, and we have to go back and do the research, sometimes people are asked to, they can't do that necessarily, the zoning wouldn't allow for it. Or, they would have to go through and convert the basement apartment to an ADU, and actually go through the process.
Yeah, just for clarity, though, you put a second kitchen in, you have an ADU, and that's illegal under our zoning code today. You cannot put in a kitchen and have a separate living unit, right?
We actually removed that standard, because it was causing...
So, what makes it an ADU?
So, interesting. Not real sure. So, essentially, the, it's completely separate from the unit, right? So, you have a second entrance that goes to the outside, you cannot, so, let's, let me use an example, so I can talk kind of logically. So, you have a house, and the house has a basement, and you can go from upstairs to downstairs in that basement. You add a exterior door to the basement, so you can come in on the first level, and now you can come in and out on the second level. You still do not have an ADU. If you were to rent the basement that you can come in and out of, that's still connected to the upper floor, out, and you don't get a complaint from your neighbor, good for you. As soon as you close off the stairway between the upstairs and the downstairs, and now you have two separate units, you have to access both units from an exterior, and when I say exterior, it could be a common hallway or something, but you have two separate entrances to two separate units, then it's a second dwelling unit, whether it's ADU, or, you know, you've taken a single-family home and made two single-family homes on the lot, with this particular example, because I'm not using lot sizes. So, it's the, you cannot move from one unit to the other through a, through a common passway. And that was the reason for the kitchen. We were having very large homes built, they wanted to entertain in their basement, or whatever, the rec room or something, and wanted a kitchen, and as soon as we had that second kitchen, it's considered a dwelling unit, and then we told a lot of people no. So, that, that particular provision was removed.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you. So, a demising wall, sorry, Mr. Rice, so a demising wall is what creates the ADU?
Yes, thank you, I couldn't think of that term.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just wanted to chat a minute about the privacy piece, the height requirement, or the height limitations. I think when you're getting to 30 or 35 feet, that's tall. I think the difference, in my mind...
Commissioner, are we able to excuse this member of the public on comment, or is your question for her?
No, this is for her. Thank you. In my mind, the difference is the way that it's oriented on the property. So, I mean, though we, we can't change, we can't stop changing neighborhoods, or more people or less people moving in and out of our neighborhoods, because that's, none of us can control that. However, discussing this piece, I think the bigger concern, if I'm hearing you correctly, is the, the ability for someone to look down into someone else's backyard, to be sort of hovering over a neighboring...
Correct, yes.
...person. So, so that you lose that, and you bought a certain type of property, and now that's no longer.
Yes, and so, I can't tell you how many times we go look at houses, and then, and the pictures, you don't see it, and then you get there, and more often than not, people do not want a patio, or a neighbor that is close enough to look down upon their barbecues or their family gatherings, or whatever the case is.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I think that's my, the point I was making last time, is that because of the orientation of the property, being behind another property, or in front of another property, if we're removing that stipulation, that is different than someone tearing a house down and building a new house close to the frontage, or whatever that site orientation is, that's what makes it different, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments?
Since I'm, since I've given the opportunity, I'm going to take it. My name's Dean Wall, I live at 10445 West 14th Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado. Been a resident for 37 years, and spent 35 of those years in public safety. I'll keep my comments short, I'd like to kind of echo the thoughtful, very thoughtful comments that Mr. Dittson has made. I've read through his dialogue that he has sent to you, and I think his points are well thought out. I'd also like to kind of continue Sean Hagerty's discussion, when he's talking about electricity needs, in the documentation that I've read, I haven't seen consideration given to things like the sewers, what's the impact on the sewers, what's going to be the impact on the water system. Lakewood's, it's old, and I know that a lot of Consolidated Mutuals work on improving the water system, it'll have some sort of an impact. Also, being in public safety, you know, these neighborhoods were designed, the hydrant locations for the fire service, the size of the water supply system, all of those things are impacted, and a full-size house behind another house makes access for emergency personnel a little bit more difficult, and I haven't seen where those things, or those community partners, have been brought into this discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hang on just a second, we might have some questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Buckley?
Mr. Rice, I actually have a question for you, inspired by Mr. Wall's comments. Can you tell us all about what sort of process his staff goes through to coordinate with utility companies when there's any new development, or specifically an ADU today?
If it was an ADU, they need a, essentially, a letter of authorization from the utility company, a will-serv letter is required with a permit, is the simple answer. Is that what you're looking for?
Sure. So, in general, how does a property owner go about getting the will-serv letter?
They would need to reach out to the specific utility, whether that's Lakewood Sewer Utility or Consolidated Mutual, they contact that individual utility and then get an approval, you know, plans that have something looked at to show what they're actually doing, which will fixtures, or plumbing, sewer lines and so forth, and then the utility would sign off on it, whether they had the capacity or not.
Okay. And I believe, too, you also circulate plans for developments in general to West Metro Fire, is that correct?
We do. Depending on what it is, the first review actually goes to, West Metro Fire gets the first review before it actually is accepted by the City of Lakewood.
Okay. And that's for all projects, inclusive of accessory dwelling units and other residential structures?
I would need to confirm that, but I believe so.
Okay. And... And I guess just also then to clarify for the public, I think nothing in this particular section of the code governing accessory dwelling units, supplemental standards that we're talking about tonight, impacts any of the things that Mr. Rice just talked about. So if you didn't know those things, now you do. So now that you've heard him say those, does that alleviate your concerns? Do you still have more questions that you would be concerned about with regards to utility issues?
With, with regards to utilities, no. I just, what I had, what I had seen, what I was aware of, didn't appear that some of these other considerations had been thought about. I don't know that the, that the parking, the whole parking matrix structure really deals with increased density in R1 residential neighborhoods. I know particularly at my house, they built a, an apartment building down, down the street and basically told all of the residents, "Well, if you don't want to pay for our parking, you can just go park anywhere on the street." And, you know, so now my visitors have to park a block away to come to my house. And just some of those things, after being there for 37 years, just don't seem to be quite fair, that they've been given due consideration for the global impact on the neighborhoods.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
We have, without question, an affordability problem.
Sure.
And it's not just Lakewood. What would be your thought? What would be a change that you think for accessory dwelling units that would be reasonable, that would maybe help with that problem that is pretty well documented?
Sure. Well, and again, you know, I really agree with the comments that Mr. Ditsen has already submitted to you, and there's no reason for me to regurgitate any of that information. I think that it, it adds additional density, the availability for additional ADUs, takes some of the regulation off of it without going to extreme measures and, you know, having somebody build a second home in a backyard next to my house. Now, I live in a one-story, single-family home with a large lot because I wanted to live in Lakewood. Lakewood was affordable compared to Golden, compared to Littleton, compared to Cherry Creek, compared to Denver. It's why I moved here. And I just see this changing the nature of neighborhoods a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any com-- oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kettner. We had a late buzzer.
Well, I've had, I've had a question in the back of my mind for this, for quite a while about this, and you sort of touched on it. So at what point do we have a single-family neighborhood and what, what point do we have a duplex neighborhood?
Exactly.
And, and that's a serious question, because in my neighborhood, you know, I've said this, I think, every meeting that I've been here that we've discussed this, of the 25 ADUs, nearly half of them are in my neighborhood, because my water and utility district does not charge at all if you want to build an ADU. And that's really the main barrier we hear, is that tap fee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that they're not being built. But in my neighborhood, they are. And so, and it's a serious question. Have you thought about it?
Well, no. You know, I see, I see increased density on my property, basically using the same sewer tap that, you know, I don't know what, what your code requires. If somebody applies for an ADU, depending upon how it's designed, does it just use my sewer tap and my water supply? If, if it is allowed a second sewer tap and a second water supply, doesn't that almost make it a separate residence on the same, on the same divided property? You know, so, again, I think their comments really covered it. It takes my R1 restrictions and makes it an R2 because it's got a separate water and a separate--
Yeah. Any thoughts as to, like, at what point does that single-family neighborhood then seem more like a duplex neighborhood? Is there, or have you, would it, would it make sense to you to, like, there are certain things that we limit the distance between?
Yeah, I wouldn't particularly have any, any direct--
Any thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide any comments? Well, thank you very much, and our thanks to all of you, as well as to the folks who commented on Lakewood Speaks. Now we'll move to commission discussion. As a reminder, we have a document that is in front of us, but this commission is free to suggest changes, to move on that document, to not move on that document. That is up to the will of the commission. I will note again that comments that I have made previously, we have 42,400 single-family homes in Lakewood. In the 10 years since we have these ADU regulations, there's speculation that there may be ADUs out there that we don't know about, but I haven't heard any evidence of that. We do know that only 25 have been approved in 10 years. Now, it may be that the reason is the utilities and the cost of the taps. We have no power to change that. So it is possible that we could dramatically liberalize the ability for ADUs, and yet there won't be any more ADUs, because the real barrier is something that we can't do anything about. But the reason that I am supportive of most of these changes, though I'm always interested in what other members would suggest in terms of rewriting these or making other recommendations to the city council, but the reason I am is that I think with only 25 in 10 years, we essentially outlaw ADUs. They don't exist in Lakewood. And I think they need to exist because they're a part of the puzzle of affordability. And I, I hear people that say, "I've been here for a long time. I want things to stay the same." The problem is, things have changed, and we have an affordable crisis that we did not have 10 years ago or 20 years ago or 30 years ago. And I think that's an important policy, and that's one of the reasons that I think some lessening of the restrictions on ADUs are necessary. I don't know that we're going to get that many more. I'm in Consolidated Mutual Water. They told me they would charge me $32,000 if I put in an ADU. I will not be putting in an ADU for that reason, even with all of these changes. But there may be properties where it makes sense. And if it makes sense for the property owner, and they have to meet all of the existing open space requirements, they have to meet all of the existing setback requirements, they have to stick with this height limitation that's in there. I think that's something to try. So those are my two cents, and I invite the rest of the commission, Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Chair Kolkmeier. I do agree with a lot of your sentiments. I know 25 in 10 years is not anything near the number of naturally affordable units that we are going to need to solve our severe affordability crisis, which, you know, every candidate in the council election that just wrapped up was talking about all the time. You know, this is a piece of the puzzle. This is not a silver bullet. This will not solve the issue. There are, there's not one solution to the affordability crisis with housing. You know, there's like 100 solutions, and we need as many of them as we can to, to address that problem. I am, in all seriousness, I do want to address your question, Commissioner Kettner, at what point does it become a duplex neighborhood? I think, I think that the answer is, is no time soon, and maybe even with these liberalizing changes. You know, 43,000 homes in Lakewood, two and a half ADUs a year. I mean, at that rate, it will take, you know, you know, hundreds of years until even a small percentage in the single digits above 1% of homes in Lakewood have an ADU at that rate. I think if we liberalize it, that will quite possibly speed up the rate, but, you know, there's, for all sorts of reasons, you know, the, maybe the sewer taps are the beginning of it, but just, there's a lot of people who don't want an ADU on their property, and, you know, no one's forced to build one, that I'd like to see these become more common, but I'm also realistic that there's only going to be so many. And so, at what point does it become a duplex neighborhood? I, I don't foresee that happening anytime soon, no matter how far we push to liberalize this, quite frankly.
Would any commissioners like--?
So I think somebody mentioned the parking. I know it was mentioned online, at least, if not here. Most of these changes, you know, like you said, I don't foresee them making actually much of an impact. Our most, our recent housing study says this is one of the products that people aren't that interested in, and like Mr. Kolkmeier said, you know, they're really expensive to build right now. Most of these changes I can live with. There are two that are really troubling to me, and one of them is the parking. And Mr. Rice, I think I have a question for you, because I've been mulling this over for weeks now in my head. And the argument, I believe, was, why would we be stricter with an ADU when a single-family home does not require any off-street, I'm making sure I'm saying it right, any off-street So, so that is true, that our, our one districts do not require any off-street parking?
Correct.
Okay. So here's the difference. Now we have two families instead of only one. And the requirement currently is only for one parking spot. So if the house currently has one off-street parking, then that could be the designated one for the ADU if they choose, and they wouldn't have to build a new one, correct?
Correct.
So, really, the one parking spot only would apply to single-family homes where there's not currently at least one off-street parking spot.
Right, and I'd like to clarify my comment. So if there is a garage on the site, and there's a driveway in front of it with parking spaces, we wouldn't consider that. That's for the existing structure, and so we wouldn't consider it for the ADU. So they would have to add an additional space to that. So whether it was required or not, they built the structure, they built the driveway to it, it's for that particular structure.
Okay. But if there's parking, I mean, a lot of driveways, I'm thinking about, almost every driveway has a little parking next to the driveway.
I--
That could count.
Wouldn't speak of that, but if it did, yes, that could count as a space.
Right. Just not the driveway leading into a garage, if the home happens to have a garage. Not every house has a garage.
That's true.
Okay. So I think that's why, that is one of the requirements that I think is very reasonable in the current ordinance, and I don't think that getting rid of that requirement will have an impact on whether or not somebody builds an ADU, and I think it could have a great impact on neighbors in a neighborhood. So that is something that I would ask my fellow commissioners to also ponder between now and the next time we meet on this, assuming we will, we'll meet on this again. And then the other part of this that does, that I just don't think I've gotten, it came up, I think, at our meeting, two meetings ago on this, is how specifically is this going to interact if we get rid of the other required, the second part of it that really bothers, that I'm very unsettled about, is the getting rid of the owner occupancy in one of the units. And the current STR regulations state specifically that ADUs could be used as short-term rentals. So with the way this is written, we could now have a property with two short-term rentals on the property and no owner on site. And so how is this going to, before we make this owner-occupied change, I think we really need to get clarification as to how that's going to work with the ADUs and the new short-term rental regulations. Or do you have an answer for that now?
I do not have any information on the short-term rentals. That's administered through the clerk's office, and I, for one, as a planner, am not familiar with how those regulations apply.
Yeah, so one of the, yeah, so. Eric, any thoughts, any other commissioners have on that would be appreciated, too, because that's a huge concern.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Commissioner Kettner, I'll start with your first point about the parking. In addition to single-family homes, R1, duplexes in our R2 zones also require no off-street parking. There's, there's no parking minimums for duplexes. And so my point a month ago was if, if duplexes, which are, I think, even with our liberalizing rules, an increment of density beyond an ADU don't require the parking space, it seems overly burdensome to require the parking space for the increment of density immediately below that. Mr. Rice did say something in his answer to your question that was maybe not quite what I was expecting, so, Mr. Rice, can you clarify? If an existing single-family home has a driveway or a garage, and so there's parking that's off the street, regardless of the number of spaces that are there, under our current rules today, were you saying that those spaces, however many may exist, all apply to the existing residents on the lot? And if someone applies to build an ADU, they will be required to build one parking space in addition to however many parking spaces may already exist?
And, so, without a graphic, I don't think that I can answer Commissioner Kettner or your question. So if you have a single-car garage and you have a driveway leading up to it, that's for that structure. If you take that driveway and bump it out and make it bigger, I don't think we're going to count that as a space to the garage, right? So it's kind of like-for-like. So whatever is dedicated to the structure on there, I think, applies to that. If you do something where you're parking a boat on the side and you add more concrete or asphalt, that doesn't necessarily count to what was built on the lot. So I don't know that we have, I have a clear answer for that parking-wise, but when the planner looks at it, it's like you've built something, you've got a vehicle that comes in and out, that spot doesn't count for satisfying your ADU requirement. So the planner looks at, essentially, these are all reviewed individually.
So what they're looking for is something like a new spot that doesn't get in the way of any of the existing spots--
The vehicle traveling in and out of the garage.
Right. So it has to provide for ingress and egress of the vehicles in the original unit--
Correct.
Independently, right? Which, which makes sense, like, you know, I live in a single-family home with no ADU on it, so it's just us, and we have a driveway that's single file and two cars, so sometimes we switch the cars around, and it's just us, and that's cool. But if it's a second unit, second set of occupants, that's, that's obviously like a nuisance. So the, the standard that's applied today in the code to determine, are you meeting the requirement of you've built your one parking spot for the ADU, is the, is it a new physical area set aside for a car that has its own independent egress and ingress that's not going to be blocked? Is that fair to say?
I wouldn't go so far as to creating a second driveway. You just need the space for the vehicle.
Right. So the driveway is, you know, wide enough for two cars, and it doesn't block the, maybe the primary garage. That, that could qualify.
Yes.
Okay. So there could be circumstances under the current code where maybe you, you have enough parking where it's deemed you would need it without building anything new, and you're building the ADU, but maybe there's other circumstances where that's not so.
Correct.
Okay. That is helpful clarification. Just always good to have the facts on that. Yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
And, and additional clarification, the scenario, Commissioner Kettner, you suggested about the short-term rentals is not accurate. Under our ordinance, it has to be your primary residence. You can only get a short-term rental if it's your primary residence-- You can only get a short-term rental if it's your primary residence, and therefore, you couldn't have them both be rentals.
But there's also a clause in there that says a short-term rental may be, excuse me, an ADU may be used as a short-term rental, and it doesn't say owner occupied. Primary residence is a little less than half the time of the year, just to clarify.
Commissioner Kettner, I would suggest that you reread the ordinance, because your scenario is not an accurate one. You could not, not have it be your primary residence and have both of them be short-term rentals. That is not allowed under our ordinance. Just double-check it. That's what it appears to say.
Okay, that one of them would have to be the primary residence, which is not the same as owner occupied, so a little more than half of the year, both of them could be short-term rentals. That would be a fair statement, correct?
I think the more important point is, the provision right now says it has to be an owner occupied either the ADU or the primary residence.
Correct, and we're considering taking that out, right?
That is, if, but if there are votes for that, then it would be taken out, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, a little more than, thank you. Yeah, that, I can reread it, but I don't think that contradicts what I said.
Any other comments? Commissioner Furman.
Essentially, going back over, because I don't know that I need to sort of re-review everything we talked about last time, but a number of these changes, and the one I wanted to focus on was the owner occupied situation. And really, what drove us to this, at least initially, in my opinion, was the, what was almost described as an unenforceable law because of the challenge of governing this rule, and then beyond that, the burdensome idea of requiring a covenant to be put in place. I mean, our goal here, right, was to support the idea that you, these were not initially investment properties necessarily, where the whole thing was, I mean, we tried to maintain the idea that the initial permit was being done by an owner occupant, but after that, I guess we're trying not to create a burden on a property that is probably not our place to burden. So, I think that one is, I mean, I can see the concerns, but I think our effort here is still trying to achieve that same concept where you're trying to at least build it in a way that meets that concern, but also not trying to create rules that we will not be able to enforce with any reasonable success. So, that is the main one I was sort of going back over a few times, because of its, again, I understand the concern, but I think what we've tried to do is pretty reasonable in that effort. And then, obviously, the parking typo is a valid concern, but those are the only ones that I have gone back over. I think a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that people might have end up being governed by the natural setbacks in zoning requirements, dimensional requirements already in place. Yeah, so, like I said, unless there's a better verbiage for that, right now, I'm actually pretty satisfied with what we have.
I will go ahead and make a motion that on subsection E of renumbered six, which relates to parking, that's the section that has the language Commissioner Buckley had come up with on making sure that there was sufficient off-street parking. I would move that in the first line of E, we strike the word "off" and insert the word "on." Is there anyone who will second that?
Can I second and also make a friendly amendment that in the second line, there's another reference to off-street parking, so the phrase "off-street parking" appears twice, and in both cases, it needs to say "on-street parking."
My apologies, no.
That's your motion I'll second.
I withdraw my motion, and I'm going to instead suggest that we change "off" to "on" on both the first line of E and the second line of E, and my apologies for being sloppy there.
I second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? I don't know if our voting system is working or not. If I hit "start voting" and people vote, let's see what happens.
And you may display the votes, or I can display the vote as well.
They displayed.
Six to zero.
Six to zero, that motion passes.
Any further motions?
So, I'm going back to the height requirements, and I think I might be the only one that has an issue with this. However, I'm curious what others think about if we were to differentiate between an ADU behind a primary residence or over the garage in its height differences. The other, I think that it may be, as a neighbor, an easier pill to swallow, I guess, if someone decides to build an ADU next to me. I mean, I'll be honest, I don't know what my neighbors are doing most of the time. I don't know who their visitors are. I don't know if they have extra people living with them or staying with them. I don't know, and I'm not watching. However, if it were to become something that was in my sphere and my, you know, and I'm noticing it, that becomes different. If we're protecting height limits in the, behind someone's home, I guess my question to other commissioners would be, would that somehow be more palatable? Would that protect people's privacy, still allow additional, an additional unit? And perhaps the parking is less of a big deal, and the, you know, the change to the neighborhood is less prevalent in the way that it feels? I'm just, I'm curious.
Commissioner Furman.
This is a question from Mr. Rice, perhaps. I was, when this was brought up in comments, I started trying to re-review the relationship of the R1-6, just because that's the only one with the five-foot side setback, trying to imagine the 30-foot height. I can't recall, is there, I mean, you may not recall offhand either, sorry to ask you, like, on the spur of the moment, but do we have any bulk plane guidance at, I mean, I'm trying to think, I guess I just can't think of any bulk planes that would prevent the 30-foot right up to the five-foot setback at an R1-6. I'm trying to imagine the worst-case scenario.
Right, no bulk plane standards for the resident, single-family residential districts.
So, well, I mean, so, under that, I can imagine trying to come up with some sort of additional piece if we were concerned about, I mean, because to be honest, as soon as you're at the 10-foot setback, and so you can imagine you're always 20 feet away, and 30 feet is pretty extreme, you would have to, like, you would have to end up having a flat roof or a single pitch, something that would be a little weird anyway, might not get past the other design standard reviews. All that aside, assuming you did get past it, I can imagine the R1-6 scenario being perhaps egregious, so, I mean, I would entertain if there were something to manage that unusual situation, but, I mean, otherwise, I think most of the other situations outside of R1-6, you're going to be pretty far back, or, and additionally, you're probably not going to end up with a flat roof or a single pitch. But, anyway, those are my thoughts regarding that concern about height.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you. I didn't know if I needed a request. So, you're saying because of the setback requirement, sorry, because of the setback requirement, that height limitation is less of an issue, because you're far enough away from, and the bulk plane?
Outside of R1-6, I would think it is, and it's an opinion, obviously, but, I mean, R1-6 is the only...
I think you're, in order to be picked up, you got to have...
Because R1-6 is a small lot.
Well, yeah, and I'm saying, and again, this is an opinion, but I think, obviously, outside of R1-6, you're at a minimum of 20 feet away. Also, the 30-foot straight up is highly unlikely due to the fact that it would either be a single pitch or a flat roof.
Yeah.
So, you're most likely dealing with, because of, if you can imagine a 30-by-30 at a 612 roof, reasonable height, you know, at best, if it's a single story, the top of that is already at, I'm sorry, my math is bad offhand, but 16 feet or something.
Right.
So, 30 feet, single wall, like, it just, that's not terribly likely, but I can imagine a terrible situation where perhaps it gets through, R1-6, 30 feet, at the five-foot setback, where I could see it being pretty egregious to a neighbor, whether it's a solar concern or a view concern. That one is probably, I guess what I'm saying is, like, I could entertain the idea of what you're talking about, where you have some height concerns in certain situations. It's pretty limited, I think, but I think there are situations you could imagine it being from.
Okay. Thanks for breaking that down for me. I think that was helpful for me.
So, my inquiry would be, is there a suggested change to this draft that anyone would like to make? Commissioner Kettner.
Mr. Rice, what would you suggest for a bulk plane or some, to address the concern brought up by Commissioner O'Neill?
If you want a bulk plane suggestion, I don't think I could propose anything that would, you would consider for adoption this evening. I'd need to go back and take a look at how that would apply to the setback, how it actually applies, where it goes, where we would place that particular requirement in the ordinance as well. I don't think, it's more of a design-type issue, not something that you're finding in the typical height setback standards and so forth. I think, I believe, the bulk plane standard that we have is in Article VII. This would probably go into somewhere in Article VI, but it's not in the table where you're going to find height and setback and open space requirements. It's more complicated than that.
And thank you, Commissioner Furman, for that suggestion. And then, Mr. Rice, are there any other suggestions, any other things that you could think of to address Commissioner O'Neill's point?
It, again, it's, it comes down to placement on the lot, and so, as you could, the taller you go, the larger the setback, you could require, and again, if it's specific to the R1 district, you actually have two heights. You have the height, and you call it out for something over a detached garage, and then you have a different height for an ADU. And again, that gets more complicated, and I'm not sure that I can propose an amendment tonight that would go in that chart, right? So, it's, it starts to become a larger issue for me to suggest something.
Although, I have to say, that almost seemed like a more simple suggestion than the bulk plane, that the higher it is, maybe more of a setback. Would it be appropriate for Commissioner O'Neill to work with staff on something about that between now and our next meeting? Or, I don't...
If she would like to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you still have your light on for? Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just say that I'll echo Commissioner Furman's thoughts, that there's a limited number of cases where, where the height so close to the property line could be an egregious concern. Something like a bulk plane standard, I think, makes sense. It does, you know, I would hope, since, Commissioner O'Neill, this is an issue you brought up, would you be willing to work on this with staff? Do you have something else in mind? I'd like to hear from you.
Can I just talk?
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yeah, I will reach out to Mr. Rice and work with staff on it, because I do think, though I do not think these are going to start pouring into neighborhoods, I don't think we're going to have duplex neighborhoods suddenly, you know, in our lifetimes, anyway. However, I think if there's an opportunity for egregiousness, it will occur. I also think there are going to be a limited number of these properties that just simply are not going to accommodate an ADU, and you just, no matter how hard someone tries to do it, they can't. So, but I would look at the R1-6, is that the zoning we were just talking, you were just mentioning? I would look at something like that with staff and make sure that that's protected, I think. Sounds like our larger lots, it's really not, it's a built-in protection based on the bulk plane requirements as they are. Is that a correct assessment?
Commissioner Furman.
And this is just trying to go back to what we were asked to do. I do think it is a good enough requirement, but even if people disagree that it's not a good enough requirement, since the thing we were asked to do was to look at ways of removing boundaries, and one of the boundaries we sought to remove was the 9,000-square-foot...
Commissioner Furman, your mic's not on again.
My apologies. So, based on what we were asked to do, which was to look at removing boundaries, right, and one of the ones we looked to remove was the 9,000 minimum square foot size of a lot, that effort we made is what freed up the possibility for the R1-6, which is the only one with a lesser side setback. That's the reason additionally I was thinking that the focus for anything we would do would be focused on changes that, focused on preventing any unwanted consequences from changes that we were proposing. The unwanted consequence here would be potentially a situation that didn't exist prior, because you couldn't have, previous to this, couldn't have built one on an R1-6 lot. So, that, or, you know, an R1-6 lot that was, so, that was the premise of why I was also thinking, that's the one lot that wasn't available prior to the work we would be suggesting, or the changes we'd be suggesting. So, it's mitigating changes that we would be making. Otherwise, the rest of these, I guess my attitude is, we're not being asked to fix problems, I think, not to say there aren't any that couldn't be fixed, but my attitude would be, we would try and prevent creating new ones.
Okay, yeah, that's, I'll reach out to Mr. Rice.
Yeah, so, here's my concern. This has languished in front of the Planning Commission for a very, very long time. The request from council was way back last spring. There have been study sessions, there have been now three regular hearings of the Planning Commission, and this is just starting the process. This would be a resolution recommending some changes to the ADU regulations for city council to then perhaps do nothing, perhaps decide they want to take it up, perhaps decide that they love this change and they want to direct staff to draft an ordinance. But all of that happens after the Planning Commission does our duty, which is a request that is from last spring. And one of the things that I suggested was that, as chair, I would try to get us to have more public involvement, and I think we've done that, tried something new tonight, I think it went well, and to move things forward to the next stage. So, I think we are at a stage, based upon all of these meetings and discussions, to either vote to send something to them or not, and I am still affording an opportunity for anyone to suggest any changes to this, but I'm not hearing any specific motions. End of lecture. Commissioner O'Neill.
Yeah, so, I actually almost asked this when we were finishing up that last discussion of me studying this with Mr. Rice or staff, if this was really an appropriate time to be doing that, because ultimately, we are just making this suggestion or recommendation to city council, who could then move forward with further study specifically to the R1-6, and I don't know if we want to mention the R1-6 in line item 5B, where we're talking about the 30-foot, where the height... talking about the thirty-foot, where the height requirement is, or restriction is listed, or if it's not necessary. And I guess I'm open to that discussion, too. But I'm happy to have discussions with Mr. Rice or any staff member regarding it. Ultimately, I don't know what good it does, because we're not making the ordinance, I mean, to your point. So I'm curious about thoughts on that.
So, are there any motions that anyone would like to make? Commissioner Kettner. At least you looked like you were going for your button. Or not?
So, yeah, Commissioner, so, do you intend to make a motion for us to adopt this as is with that one amendment tonight? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think what I said was, I'm open to any Commissioner making any motion.
You are, but, thank you. I would prefer not to make this motion. I would prefer that we have a more complete document with more public input first. However, if you intend to make a motion to adopt this tonight, then I would suggest some language to address Commissioner O'Neill's concern, even if it is simply to address the concern. And I think that is not doing our duty to not address the concern prior to making a recommendation. The duty of this commission is to take that weight off of the city council and to do our due diligence prior to adoption. So I would hope that we would get that language and maybe do some more outreach. If not, could we at least include some language that Commissioner, that then I would like to make some kind of a motion, or request that maybe another Commissioner consider doing one, that would somehow request addressing Commissioner O'Neill's point prior to adoption by city council.
So this is always the, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Neill. Oh, no, your light's just left on. So this is always the difficult thing about actually, you know, sitting in these chairs. We have to make a motion, and something that people understand, and they can vote to support or to oppose. So I'm a little, without a particular suggestion on change language, I mean, I'm open to hearing any Commissioner suggest a change right along the lines of what you're suggesting. I just don't know what that motion is, without hearing it.
May I speak?
Of course. Commissioner Kettner.
Correct. That is why, that I believe the request was originally to ask to work with staff between now and the next meeting, but then your statement seemed to imply that you wanted us to vote on this now and did not want to have another meeting on this. Would that be a fair statement?
May, may, I actually, I don't know if the commission, I don't know if this will help or confuse things. If you, and I can pull it up online if you want me to, have you actually looked at how the height regulation reads in seventeen five one? If you go in and look, there are two heights. So you have the primary structure height, and it is, I gotta take these off, thirty-five feet across all the R districts. If you go to the accessory structure height, it is thirty-five feet in R one forty-three, twenty-five in R one eighteen, and then twenty in everything else. Then below that is an ADU height, and it says twenty or thirty with a per in, explaining the note to the side, and the thirty is if located over a detached garage. So if you have a freestanding ADU, it's limited to twenty feet. It's when it's above the garage that it's the thirty-foot height limit. I don't know if that addresses a concern, but that is what the current standard is.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, and that was very helpful to me. And I think I'm comfortable with that.
So Commissioner Kettner, I guess I would just ask, it sounds like what you're suggesting is that this be tabled till a future meeting. Is that what, is the motion you would be comfortable making?
I would prefer to make a motion that truly addresses the concern, and I don't think we're ready to do that. Sure. I make a motion to table this to a date certain of December sixth, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second.
Thank you. Then I would like to make a separate motion that we add in our recommendation to council, the recommendation that they address, well, actually, let me ask a question first, because in your response, Mr. Rice, when you talked about the ADU height, now we're talking about ADUs potentially being larger than the main structure. But they would still be limited to the height requirement?
Let me, let me pull the standard up on the Pooty M computer.
Because I understand now, you know, freestanding, twenty feet, above the garage, thirty feet. But right now, they're also limited to 700 square feet, and, you know, we also talked about the possibility that 1,400 square feet in some of these older neighbors could, neighborhoods So how, so I guess the question is, how do we define primary and accessory?
I can pull the definition up, but the primary, the primary structure is the residence, right? So, and there's definitions in the ordinance, if you want me to pull it up. But yes, there is a definition for primary, the primary, I can't remember what the actual definition is, but ADU is, there's a specific definition for that, and there's a definition for accessory structure.
Did you have your light on again? Commissioner Kettner, did you have anything further you wanted to say?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Furman.
So, in looking at the fact that it is twenty feet across the board until you get to some of the other R one districts, I would be inclined to also say the same thing, which is, it's a little bit less of a concern, because you already have accessory structures that can be that high. I mean, because the only, the reason I was intending to agree was the concern of something that we were creating by allowing the ADUs on the sites that were smaller in setback. There's still some truth to that concern, but it's obviously a lot less at twenty feet when accessory structures are allowed. So, yeah, I mean, it certainly seems like less of a concern with that height.
Commissioner Buckley.
I've been trying to scratch some language for, for a motion to amend some text here, but this is always very hard, just in real time, as the meeting's going on. So I don't think this is a motion yet, but it's kind of like a half-formed idea. You know, the bulk plane issue that Commissioners Furman and O'Neill were talking about is, as has been pointed out, kind of come up because perhaps the fact that we're allowing these kinds of structures on lots smaller than 9,000 square feet, which didn't used to be the case. I did just look up some of the zone district summary sheets, and, you know, yeah, it appears that on our R one districts above R one six, we have a ten-foot side setback instead of a five. So I'm envisioning maybe some sort of language could be reasonable specifically on lots less than 9,000 square feet to require a ten-foot setback for a thirty-foot height, and the five-foot setback that's allowed by code would be for the twenty-foot height that is our existing accessory structure standard. If we, if we wanted to take a break for ten minutes, I think I could, like, maybe draft something that is coherent, that expresses that idea. Commissioners Furman and O'Neill, and the rest of the Commissioners, too, is that something that, yeah, seems prudent, that would maybe further alleviate these concerns?
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yeah, I think that sounds great, and I appreciate you taking some time to wordsmith it, because I'm not good at that. So I appreciate your, your willingness.
Is your light on, or did you leave it on again? I guess I would, my reaction to that is, I would be less comfortable with that, because if we're not ready, and we may not be, and we need more time to work on this particular issue, we have another, our next meeting, is it as soon as next Wednesday?
Uh...
What is today, the eighth, the fifteenth?
Yeah, the, the fifteenth. You would, we could meet on that date, you would need to set that date this evening to do that.
I mean, we moved this date from the first week of November to accommodate Forty West Arts. They wanted to present today. So unfortunately, we didn't get two weeks between meetings. But if it's the will of the commission to further work and maybe be in a position to actually suggest some language that would be changed, I would feel more comfortable giving time for that rather than trying to rush it from the, from the dais.
In that case, I'd be comfortable trying to draft some language and submitting it to Mr. Rice ASAP, so that it can be circulated back to the rest of the Commissioners for thought, and, you know, posted on Lakewood Speaks for next week and all that.
Yeah, and that's important to me, that it gets posted in time for the public to see it in advance, just like we have the last two meetings. So that will be the fourth meeting on this issue. So let's just double-check with Mr. Rice, that if we were to set this for a regularly scheduled meeting on the fifteenth, I think it is, and we were able to have Commissioner Buckley suggest language for a, it would be revision four of this document, could that be posted on Lakewood Speaks in time for people to see it?
Hold on, I was focused on the first one, trying to figure out dates. So if you, so if you came up with a draft and you wanted to post it on Lakewood Speaks...
Yeah, just like we have, this is draft three, I think, that we've looked at.
Right.
So it'd be a draft four that would be available on Lakewood Speaks in advance of the next hearing.
Right. And that, Lauren, so we're not following normal processes, 24 hours, correct, to posting? So if, yes, let's see, Wednesday at seven, so as long as I could get it up, the prior, you know, close of business day, Tuesday, we could, we could make the notice requirement. It's not going to be anything else, the publication that we send out, or, so it's just posting and then putting up on Lakewood Speaks.
Okay. I would make a motion that we delegate to Commissioner Buckley to draft a version that addresses this issue, provide it to Mr. Rice in time for it to be posted, for the public to see it in advance of our next regularly scheduled meeting, and with that, that we table this discussion until our next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I volunteered the idea, so, yeah, I'll do it.
All right. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion passes. So, that completes item number four. We have item number five. And we're going to go, unfortunately, that conversation did take much, much longer than I had anticipated.
Excuse me, point of order, Chair. We said, the motion, I think, was for our next regularly scheduled meeting, and we sort of made a, to next week, although next week would normally be a study session, I think.
No, the fifteenth is a, is a regular meeting.
Is it, okay. So today was a special?
Today was, yeah. Alexis had been given a study session date and couldn't move it.
Okay. Thank you. So we're talking next week? Just to declare, I'm just to clarify, I'm just clarifying, we're talking November fifteenth. Okay. Is what we're anticipating for that?
I, I think that was the motion.
Well, the motion was the next regular meeting, and I was just kind of clarifying when the next regular meeting is expected to be on a week from tonight, on November fifteenth.
Fifteenth, correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Item five, other legislative matters, again, this was a request from city council a very, very long time ago, that has to do with affordable home ownership. And I'm not sure how far we're going to get with this tonight. I know that Commissioner Griblionis has done a lot of work on this. So I do want to, number one, afford public comment on this as well, because it was posted. So I don't know if anyone has come, we did have some Lakewood Speaks comments, but there may very well be people here that want to comment on this issue as well. Just the quick summary, we had a request from city council saying, what changes would the Planning Commission suggest that would facilitate more affordable home ownership? And we had been discussing, and we've done this in a number of meetings and in study sessions, the issue of something called R one zero, which means no minimum lot size. So in theory, you could build a house on a smaller lot, and therefore, it would be less expensive and easier for people to afford. That's the basic concept. With that, I would invite any member of the public that would like to comment on this issue. This is an opportunity to do so, but we don't actually, we haven't even gotten to the point where we're looking at an actual document, just interested in anyone's perspective, if they would like to make a comment. Mr. Dittson.
Yes, thank you. I wasn't really prepared to, to make a statement on this. I do have a couple of opinions, but given the hour, I don't think I'll go very far into it. But I think some of the concerns that we have regarding placement and setbacks and things like that deserve to have some consideration in this context as well.
Any questions? Mr. Dittson? No? Thank you. Would anyone else here in chambers want to comment on the issue of affordable home ownership potentially related to allowing a lesser lot size than our current minimum, which is 6,000 square feet? Appreciate that. We'll close the public comment, and we'll move to commission discussion. And the first question is really, I think, for Commissioner Griblionis to provide us with some of the homework he has done that will educate us further on what some of these might look like on different types of lots.
So hopefully, everyone could see what's on the screen right now. I... I just have a full screen. Okay. What's the hotkey for presentation? Not print? Nope. Hmm. I never remember for Blue Beam. The short answer might be no.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
For what it's worth, it's big enough. How to go fullscreen and then Blue Beam, I could do the hotkey. And just interrupt me if you find it. Okay, so I completed my assignment from our last meeting where we just wanted a graphic representation of what the current R1 six zoning looks like on a, on the smallest allowable lot in Lakewood, which is 6,000 square feet. And then as we go through this document, I just progressively reduced the requirements by a flat number just so we can visualize what those different impacts are. And I just want to be clear that I would fully expect what the ultimate outcome of this discussion to be would be a... You were right. I just pressed it wrong. Anyway, so it's, we just did a blanket reduction of all the requirements to see how those unfold on the site. And as I was mentioning before, we'll probably need to articulate these in more detail individually to come up with something that's workable. But this is, again, just a graphic representation. So feel free to interrupt me at any time with questions. On the screen currently is a 6,000-square-foot lot with the R1 six requirements laid out. That is a 25-foot front setback, 5-foot side setbacks, and 15-foot rear setback. We are using the street on the left as the primary frontage of the property and just graphically some adjacent 6,000-square-foot lots. On the 6,000-square-foot lot with 50% open space requirement, you're looking at an allowable, buildable area of 3,000 square feet or allowable coverage, I should say. And that just conveniently works out to the entire area within the setbacks of the R1 six zone district. I will jump over to the next one here. So the goal was just kind of slowly reduce these in a reasonable manner. I think we were going in thirds initially was the goal. I just wanted to point out that this one just kind of hit a snag out the gate because by reducing the minimum lot width from 60 down to 40, you still can't divide the full lot width into two parcels. So you're forced to kind of instantly jump into an alternate orientation that would require some type of shared drive to get to. I would suggest that we skip to the next one because it's probably more educational. But I can always go back to that in the future if anyone desires. So instead of the third, I divided it in half to get a minimum lot width of 30 feet. So we can now take that 60-foot wide lot and actually divide it into two parcels. And what that starts to look like, on the upper and lower lots, we still kept the same setbacks on those properties, just so you can kind of always reference how this is being affected. But by reducing the requirements in half as a blanket reduction, you get a front setback, hold on, of 13 feet, side of three, and rear of eight. And I see that it says 16 feet here, so that would be 13, a drafting error. Open space would be reduced down to 25% instead of 50%. And, you know, what this ends up allowing us to do is fit two single-family residences on what would have been a single lot previously. And I need to grab my calculator real quick.
Commissioner Buckley.
Commissioner Buckley.
Commissioner Griblionis, I was kind of curious when I saw that. I noticed that discrepancy of the 16 feet and 13 feet earlier. So maybe you're calculating with a calculator here. I was, I hadn't done the math, but I was surmising maybe you needed to exceed one of the setbacks anyways to get the open space requirement. And also, I guess for clarification, I'm interpreting these gray dashed rectangles as like the maximum allowable footprint of an area where you could build something, not necessarily, you know, by no means that would be required. You'd fill up every single square inch of that 1824. That's basically your footprint you're allowed to work in. Someone could fill it up, but they don't have to.
That's likely.
That's correct.
Right, I would, yeah, I would think. Not likely to, but, I mean, I just, go on. But I mean, I can already say, thinking about this, that, well, maybe you can just finish, but...
Yeah, the...
Reducing every single dimension geometrically by some proportion is, well, maybe not the best, but reducing some of them has yet other opportunities. So I'll just invite you to go on.
It's definitely not the best approach. It's just purely to graphically represent what the different implications are. And none of these are my proposed changes. These are purely a graphical representation as requested by the commission at our last meeting.
Totally.
And just to confirm, yeah, that gray area is just the buildable lot area within the setbacks for the residents. I don't believe there's a maximum square footage allowed on the site in terms of whether this was going to go two stories or not. So I guess it kind of creeps its own area ceiling, if you will. And I'll just go to the next one unless anyone has any other questions. So this started to get to a 33% reduction, which allows us to break up the site into three evenly spaced 20-foot parcels. It brings our minimum lot width down to 20 feet, which, again, is kind of the magic number for that 60-foot lot width. The front setback goes down to eight feet, correctly shown in this drawing, the side setback being two feet, and rear of five feet, open space requirement of 16%. And so, again, as these lots get further reductions in a blanket fashion, you can see that more and more of those lot, more and more of the lot coverage becomes available for the building to take use of. But it would be a fairly interesting building if it actually got built up to these proportions. And then the last one was just showing if building proportions are wanting to be considered within the study, how these same requirements could be potentially utilized or rearranged on the existing typical 60-by-100 lot and turned into, or thought of as more of a subdivision development or, to use the cottage home term, where you'd have to provide some type of two-way traffic to get to the further structure. And then you can see that there's, you end up with a critical failure pretty much right out the gate when you start to look at a front setback tied with a rear setback off the primary street. And then when you start to look at the subsequent properties, their primary street then becomes the access road. And so you start to get into a lot more, a much larger need of not just applying a formula to changing the zone, but this would, this organization in particular would probably lead to what would, you know, a much more detailed study from someone actually laying out the properties. And that is the last study that I've prepared for graphic clarity on our blanket reductions to the R1-0 zoning code.
Thank you. Questions from other commissioners?
And as you have questions or you're thinking or you want to see what something else might look like, we have the capability to adjust dimensions live together right now.
Commissioner Furman.
If I recall correctly, when we were having this conversation previously, what we were trying to look at was we were purposely looking at the R1 six, the smallest one, and dividing it up in such a way as to understand what was actually buildable. And I appreciate the work you did to show that. I go, I guess I go back to something, I'm going to say we, but I don't remember who all was saying it, but we're talking about, which is, I'm trying to think of the best way of phrasing it. What is the actual goal here? Like the R, and this came down to the fact that the need to divide up the lot, right, was the sort of private lot piece. And so I think this is a valuable exercise. It'll still be an interesting question as to, because I think the two different animals, I mean, maybe the goal is to provide whatever options, but the two different animals are very different things. The cottage home kind of scenario, whether it ends up being this kind of, you know, what, I can't think of the name right now of the oriented homes that are, anyway, stacked in that manner.
Slot home?
Yeah, the slot home, thank you. Whether it's like a detached slot home scenario or a cottage home or whatever it is, or the scenario that we saw in your other version, which was similar to the actual homes that Mr. Rice showed us. I guess as we try and figure out a way to, because it seemed like the big issue we were running into was what kind of constraints do we put on an R1-0, the constraints are still going to be held to what we're trying to achieve. And that's the one challenge I keep running into is, I mean, I'm not a hunter, I mean, I know what we're trying to achieve about the homeownership piece, but there's a lot of different things that can be achieved that will dictate what these constraints are. And I find myself often sort of mentally swimming as we look at these because of, you know, I think there's a, just reducing the setbacks might be one way to go. But anyway, I'm raising the issue of still trying to understand exactly what we're going, what we're going to achieve by the restrictions we put on an R1-0, not by the, by creating an R1-0.
Yeah, and as Chair Kochmeyer kind of kicked this conversation off with is that we're, I think we're investigating ways to make naturally affordable home ownership occur. And what we kind of previously were discussing was smaller homes are more affordable than larger homes. That's just a general statement. And the hurdle to developing small homes seems to be that lot sizes and lot costs make them not the best business proposition for a developer or even someone who wants to build their own small residence. It might not pencil out to be economically viable. So when we're reviewing this, I think it's, it's helpful, as you mentioned, Chair Furman, or Commissioner Furman, is, you know, what restrictions do we need to keep in place to make sure that affordable home ownership kind of stays at the center of the conversation?
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Griblionis, again, for your homework. I like pictures, I'm a visual person. And so I appreciate these pictures, especially, I think, maybe the latter two pictures you showed us are enough to convince me of something, right? There is a little bit of a question that I think I've sensed all of us struggling with exactly what we're doing here. And just my personal opinion is the last two pictures, especially you showed us of, you know, the three homes split up 20-foot wide in the lot and then the slot home stocked back. On a 6,000-square-foot lot, if that's the starting point and we're thinking of it subdividing, it's just, it's not going to work. Like there's no, like reducing the open space in that proportional manner is going to leave us with a number. There's just, nothing's meaningfully open or, you know, restricted from building on. And, you know, the 432-square-foot pads you're left with on different lots where you could build something. I mean, that's just, I don't think that's viable to build anything on. And I think if it somehow was viable, no one would like the end product. You know, especially at least of all the neighbors if this was like in an existing neighborhood. And so I think these pictures have convinced me of the idea that we might actually be looking at multiple different paths here. So I will toss these suggestions out for thought for all my fellow commissioners. You know, one path is if we have a larger vacant parcel, something that is essentially undeveloped, but it's zoned something like R1 six. But to get a more affordable home product on that, you know, mid-size vacant lot, you know, there's a handful of them left in Lakewood, not huge parcels anymore, but we have some. You know, making a zone district that allows a 3,000, 4,000-square-foot lot instead of 6,000-square-foot lots when you're developing, I don't know, 10 to 20 acres somewhere, that's going to look a lot different than any of the drawings you just showed. And I think I'm visualizing that it would look a lot better in terms of having setbacks and amount of buildable area and amount of reserved open space on the lot that is more proportionate to what people are expecting in a single-family home district while still achieving the goal in that context of essentially a greenfield development of smaller lot sizes, you know, forced smaller footprints for a home, therefore smaller homes, therefore, you know, a lower-priced home. You know, I think we could go down a road very specifically with, you know, a zone district that's envisioned to be mapped to the handful of remaining lots like that in Lakewood. I might even suggest that, you know, I believe a lot of our vacant school properties that we now have in Lakewood, a lot of them are in an R1 six zone or, you know, R1 something. I think one of the vacant schools is actually now in an R2. But, you know, regardless, you know, those might be good contexts for an R1-0 or R1 smaller than six, where we have a large enough site, where we want to look at some lots that are not the philosophy you took, which is okay, it's because it's not what we asked you to do, of, you know, designing like a street network within that and lot sizes that orient to those streets, you know, in and of themselves. That, to me, is something more along the lines of, you know, what I was envisioning for those kinds of scenarios. That's a lot more, I think, desirable as a finished state. And if we're going to have a conversation about, you know, potential, potentially shrinking lot sizes within existing neighborhoods, that's a conversation I'm still willing to have. But I think we need to start with a slightly larger footprint than maybe the R1 six to get to like more viable subdivisions of a lot that could happen. And I'd really also want that to be something that, you know, we don't go venture too far down the road on our, you know, just by ourselves as a commission that I really feel like deserves to be wrapped up in the comprehensive planning process with, you know, an exhaustive amount of public outreach because that is something that has the, you know, it just has the potential to raise a lot of valid concerns in the neighborhoods. You know, I am a proponent of, you know, adding more gentle density in our neighborhoods in a way that's compatible with the character of the neighborhoods in a way that makes sense. But yeah, some of your drawings, which are helpful, they helped me arrive at this conclusion I hadn't informed just from my own personal opinion before seeing them. Some of the steps of incremental reducing, reductions that you drew up tonight are not the way to get there, I think pretty clearly to me. So, you know, we'll move forward knowing that. And yeah, maybe I would suggest the two paths. If there's future homework you want to do, you know, just what's a 4,000-square-foot or 3,000-square-foot lot look like on a larger site? And then, you know, starting with a neighborhood that has some sort of larger parcel that makes it more feasible to subdivide and still end up with an attractive at-scale project? You know, I think that's kind of a separate path. That's all my opinion.
And you are free to rejoin us up here because we want to hear your thoughts, Commissioner Griblionis, as well. I guess I would return to one of the options that I described at our last meeting. It would be a reasonable path, if the commission wanted to, to simply say to City Council, this is an idea we think worth exploring, but it needs to be handled in a more deliberate and longer-term way consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's an option. And I just, I still think that is an option. Commissioner Kettner.
Thank you. And I think, I didn't know if this was going to come up tonight, but I think it actually kind of somewhat addresses your point that you were just making. So, Mr. Rice, if we were to add single-family detached homes as an allowable use in our mixed-use zone districts, particularly mixed-use residential and mixed-use neighborhood where some of our current single-family homes exist, but then they could build multifamily, you know, attached apartments, but the product we're talking about now would not be allowed. If we were just to add that as a use in the mixed-use neighborhoods, there would be no minimum lot size at this point for those. We would just have to come up with what we were sort of talking about tonight, setbacks and open space requirements.
I believe that is accurate. I think one of the zone districts that's mixed-use does have a lot size restriction, but I'm not sure that they all do. I would need to, I would need to verify that. But it's close, yes.
So that might be the, a real easy way to add it, you know, in places that have already been pegged for higher density, where current single-family homes already exist. And all we would have to do would be to, you know, come up with the specifics, percentages of all the, I'm too tired, different dimensions the Commissioner Grebliunis was showing us without impacting any R1-6 at this point. So we wouldn't have to kick it down the road quite as far. So just some food for thought for how to apply it maybe in a little more quickly. Thank you.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. I guess a couple of reactions to Commissioner Kettner's ideas. I believe the MN zone does currently allow single-family detached.
Does it permit MR or MN?
Yeah, I believe MR, if I'm remembering correctly, MR does not permit single-family detached, but MN does. So, yeah, it would be interesting to do the thought exercise just with the MN zone. What, what can you do, you know, just within that existing footprint? And maybe that's a template for another zone that we want to create. Just another kind of high-level idea I've had, since this discussion is about, you know, affordability and of buying something, and, you know, a home product that you buy looks like a lot of different things. In our zoning code, there is a distinction between attached homes and multifamily homes. You know, attached homes have like a separate, maybe, street-facing door or common courtyard-facing door per unit, whereas a multifamily building generally has maybe an internal corridor or external doors that are, you know, stacked on top of each other with external staircases and, you know, something like that. So the, you know, there's a distinction in our definitions of what's, what those two building types are. And just because of a quirk in Colorado state law regarding construction defects for condos, in the multifamily type, as we define it, virtually nobody builds for-sale units. They're generally all rentals because it's the same construction cost, but insurance for liability is a lot more expensive just because of state law in the multifamily type. But if you build what we define Lakewood as attached homes, those can often be fee simple lots without the condo structure and the associated liability. And so we kind of have this situation where a lot of our attached homes, as we define them, are for ownership, and our multifamily buildings, as we define them, are for rent. And I, you know, I believe we need both of, all kinds of housing. We, you know, we need probably rentals and ownership opportunities in both those things. But it is the reality that, you know, this is what we get. It's kind of segregated by each. So with that in mind, that that's just a reality we've seen, and it's likely to continue for some time. And given that there's a goal to make for-sale units that are more affordable, I would suggest that we maybe also add to this discussion adding attached homes, but not multifamily homes, as an allowed use to some districts. And again, this could be something that is done in the comprehensive plan process. It could be something we could act on a little bit quicker. The starting point, to me, that's logical, would be the R2-zone district, because it's, it's an area where we have a mixture of single-family homes and duplexes. It's already slated for a little bit more density. But what also strikes me is if we do create a R1-0 zone or R1-something less than 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size zone, we're going to have a little bit of a contradiction in that the R2-zone actually has a 5,000-square-foot minimum. And to build a duplex in a R2-zone, you have to build a 10,000-square-foot lot, which de facto means that a duplex in our duplex zone is not actually any denser on a number of units per square feet basis than single-family homes in our duplex district. It's just, it's just a district that allows a little bit more flexibility with, you know, physical arrangement of buildings on a slightly smaller lot size. And so wrapping in to this discussion, relaxing lot size requirements in R2, or potentially finding places within R2 where we want to add and allow use of attached homes but not multifamily homes, I think is a way that we could maybe take this discussion in a different direction we've taken it so far, but more straightforwardly allows for opportunities for construction of units that are going to be a little smaller, take up less land, therefore naturally going to be less costly to build, less costly to buy, and fits in with a lot of land that's already zoned and where the context is already likely to be appropriate for this extra increment of density that, you know, we're trying to find to allow these more affordable housing types to be built. So, it's late, that's a lot that I just said that we haven't gone in that direction, but I wanted to get those ideas out there for everyone to ponder on and appreciate thoughts and reactions tonight or whenever we talk about this again.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Commissioner Buckley. I think what I was following that you said there was perhaps the, and I'm getting more specific, I think, with the lot, the zoning designation, but perhaps a recommendation that would come from Planning Commission in regard to this would be that we do recommend a minimum lot size for R1-0 of 9,000 square feet, or maybe that requires further discussion, obviously, but maybe we give them a minimum lot size for the R1-0 that would allow for a more aesthetically pleasing layout to multiple units with the zero square-foot requirement. And we offer then attached homes or maximum of two units for the R1-6 zone. Just thoughts on that.
So sometimes in these complicated discussions, we get ourselves a little twisted. If you have 9,000 square feet and you want to build on less than 6,000 square feet, well, no matter what, you're going to have to subdivide it. You have to subdivide the 9,000. So the only question is not where, how big do you start? The only, there's only one question, which is how low can you go, right? Because whether you have an acre or you have 12,000 square feet or you have 6,000 square feet, you would be subdividing it. Right now, we cannot subdivide it to less than 6,000 square feet. So the question from council was, is there an argument for affordable homeownership of a smaller lot size? The question, I don't think we have to ask the other question, which is how big a lot do you start with? The only question is how, how small can you go? Does that make sense?
Commissioner Furman.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think what you're saying though gets back to my original statement, which was what was the goal of the R1-0, right? And because this stemmed from a conversation some of us had at the end of the last meeting, which had to do with the fact that what we're doing here by having a no minimum lot size is trying to divide the, it's, it's maybe something different than merely dividing it into three pieces to make three row homes. It was creating the opportunity to do things like the cottage homes where you need a sort of infinite flexibility to be able to do a variety of these things. Without weighing any judgment on that, I can see the concern Commissioner Buckley mentioned, which is like, are you going to pick out one lot? I mean, it's a, it's a challenging thing to do to fit in with the context perhaps of existing neighborhoods when there's not, with the exception of schools, contiguous acreage that would allow you to do a whole neighborhood of this. And so it depends on what we're trying to do, whether or not we decide, because if what we're trying to do is something that we like the look of and is some form of a home that is, because the whole thing is a little strange, which is why I think Commissioner Kettner made the point even, you know, you could just add the single-family to certain mixed-use neighborhoods. But I think the, the goal here was to allow that level of flexibility that goes beyond even just creating a fairly densely-packed row homes. But we keep kind of going back to that, how do you do it in these neighborhoods and not impact the context, what have you. So this is where, I don't know, I get a little tempted to your original statement, which is to say, it's hard to achieve this without a lot of study because of what we're trying to achieve is a lot of different things. We were talking about a lot of different options that can be brought about. And so unless we either pick one of those options, unless we pick one of those, I think the other way to go is to simply say it takes more study than can be done to provide a recommendation.
Let me test a motion for the group. What would be the reaction of commissioners if we were to, as the Planning Commission, pass a resolution that says to city council that as our recommendation is that as a part of the comprehensive plan process, staff be directed to study and make recommendations regarding affordable homeownership related to smaller lot sizes that are currently allowed? Is that something that we would be, that, that's just a very general statement. It's not a specific proposal the way the ADU regulations are that we've been talking about. But that would maybe fulfill our obligation to city council to give them a response, because they have been waiting since April. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Buckley.
A question for Mr. Rice, based on Chair Kolkmeier's idea. Would we need to make a resolution expressing this sentiment to council that it should be wrapped in the comprehensive plan process? Or could we simply pass a resolution directly asking you and your staff, you know, Roger's staff, to include this as part of the comprehensive plan process to systematically study the opportunity for smaller, more affordable lots throughout Lakewood? Is this, are we at a point in the comp plan where we still have time to wrap that in?
I think that's a question for the actual commission. Rogers' group, as part of this comprehensive planning process, this came up a long time ago, you know, they're, they haven't made a decision. So if you are asking them or council, there's still time to do that. They're going to come to the commission. In fact, we're sometime early first quarter of next year, an outline process for the commission. So the commission's going to be involved in that comprehensive planning process, and you have opportunities to share that directly with staff as well. So whether it goes to staff or city council, I think it should go to council, that's where the directive came from. But I think that's for you to decide. Then you will have opportunity to share beyond this particular topic with Roger's staff.
All right. But what I'm hearing then, I think, is that if the commission so pleases to give direction to staff either soon, you know, now or in the next couple of meetings after now, or even as far from now as sometime next spring, when these comp plan study sessions start coming to us to include this in the process, they're still at a point where they can do a good comprehensive study of an array of options, talk to neighborhoods, talk to the public about it, involve it in the whole public process that's going on with the plan, all the, all the nine yards. Is that correct to say?
I think that was a question for you.
Oh, sorry. Repeat the last part.
Am I correct in, in understanding what you said to me then, that there's still adequate time for planning staff, just given where the comprehensive plan is at, to incorporate a new suggestion that might come here, I don't know, tonight, next week, next month, to, you know, as soon as we can formulate something a little more specific that's in line with Chair Kolkmeier's idea of incorporating this into the planning process? You still had, you're still at a point in that process where you can react to our directive and actually do a good thorough, proper job with it?
Yes, yes. In fact, weekly, we have what we call Development Assistance Team meetings, and I get questions, what happened at the last commission? So Amy Deeknickel, who's kind of leading the housing, she was here with the Housing Plant Study Plan, is following along. Rogers' crew, Alexis, ask what's happening. So staff is following along and they, they hear what you're saying, so.
Okay. So it seems that we both will have the opportunity to comment on this after staff brings the comp plan to us as it evolves. I think that's apples to our oranges. And the oranges are, city council said, what do you think of this? And I'm not getting the sense from all of our discussions that we've got a particular proposal. But that is up to you all to suggest. Commissioner Kettner.
As far as R1-0 goes, I'm good with that, you know, with that direction. The request was not around R1-0, though, and there were a lot of suggestions back in July that we were going to discuss. R1-0 was one of them. And that might be the most efficient thing to do with R1-0. And then I think Commissioner Buckley had wanted to tackle next, inclusionary zoning had come up as one of those things. And maybe that would be something that would be easier to get a more specific suggested ordinance on. So what I'm sort of hearing is to make that suggestion on R1-0 and then have the discussion on affordable ownership on the other items that we were going to discuss.
And just so I understand, when you refer to mandatory inclusionary zoning, that would be, that, that's not ownership, is it? Or is it?
Yes. It's for rental and ownership. And there are other ownership things that we talked about also, absolutely. So the way, well, we can talk about it at the time, but yes.
Okay. What is the will of the commission on this issue? Are you prepared to make some response to the city council regarding this issue?
Do you mean exclusively the R1-0 or the various homeownership? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make sure.
Thank you. That was what I was thinking, too.
So I'm not making a motion yet. I might if no one else does. But my preference is to have it come from you all as to what your sense is, and then we'll test it and see if others agree. But the answer may be that you, we do not have a recommendation for city council yet, or it could be that we do. But does anyone want to make a suggestion? And Commissioner O'Neill, I don't know if your light was left on or?
So it sounds like the R1-0, our comment regarding that potential new zoning is that that should be wrapped into the comprehensive plan and something that requires further study. That's where we're at with that, correct? That we're not studying that any further? That's what I'm hearing.
Commissioner Buckley.
I would have a maybe more nuanced take than that. I think creating a new zone district that has a smaller minimum lot size but allows single-family usage within the context of single-family usage within the context of it being intended to be mapped into existing neighborhoods that where lots would eventually, over time, get subdivided for more housing, that is something that I think is sufficiently complex enough that it deserves to be part of the whole comprehensive plan process and community discussion. I would say that if we wanted to make something like an R1.0 zone, or maybe we call it R1.3 or something, because we do go back to a 3,000-square-foot lot size, and I'm just hypothesizing that might be something I'm more open to after seeing some of Commissioner Reblin's drawings tonight, but I'm not set on it yet either. But if we wanted to make a zone district with the intention that that would be used in cases of greenfield development, or maybe potential school redevelopment, or something like that, and so we could still be proactive to map it to maybe a handful of locations, but really couldn't be classified as a, you know, an existing developed area, you know, truly a greenfield, so it's going to be a handful of places throughout the city. I think that is something that, you know, crafting dimensions, starting from the R1.6 and just strategically reducing some of the dimensions, lot sizes, you know, some setbacks, but, you know, maybe not all of them in the exact geometric proportions we saw tonight. Maybe I'd be inclined to keep the open space high, but see what happens if we reduce some of the other, you know, dimensions and use that for like new greenfield developments. That's something I think would still be, you know, a conversation that I think we are capable of going forward and something we could recommend. And that's just all my opinion, too. But they're very different things, the two different categories.
Right. So I guess what the clarification I was trying to make was, all of the things that you just mentioned require a great deal of study. Would everybody agree with that? So are we, as planning commission, taking on that study? Or we're saying, this requires more study, here are some ideas, city council move forth with that, you know, or don't, whatever they think of it? But I think we're, and I'm doing it, too, getting way in the weeds on these solutions that we don't have enough information on, and we really aren't being asked to figure them out, even though the diagrams were fantastic, and thank you so much for doing them, because it did help a lot to just see that, the way that it was breaking down. I think, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, in a simplified way, we're telling city council, because all of the things that you just said, Commissioner Buckley, are very wise, and they're smart, and they're great ideas, but are we really being asked to provide all of that? I guess that's my question. I'm trying to figure out how to move forward with it, that's all.
Commissioner Furman.
I guess I'm inclined to say that, and maybe this is too far, but that one thing we can simply say is that after the study we've had, we, you know, whatever, support the idea that there is merit, I don't know how you want to phrase it, but support the idea that there's merit for smaller lot sizes, potentially down to R1.0, but this obviously requires study. The fact of the matter is, is none of us are dedicated to this as our day job to make sure that we understand all the implications. And so I think we can say we support the idea, we've studied it to a degree we can, we support it, and it should be part of the comprehensive plan, or something along those lines, because I think we've seen that it provides a lot of options, but it provides so many options that someone has to study and decide how it actually fits in, and none of us have the eight hours a day to do so. And to come up with the constraints to determine, is this going to be a row home methodology or cottage home, or what is this really going to be, and where is it going to be? We could lose ourselves for years chasing this if we're meeting twice a month. So I think, I think we could say something to the effect of, we've studied it, we support the idea, it should be reviewed in the comprehensive plan, something to that effect.
So just to clarify, we support the study of smaller lot sizes in coordination with the comprehensive plan. That would be something that we could put forth, right? That's.
I mean, this one steps further than that, is what I was suggesting is, I mean, and again, maybe not everyone agrees with this, but you can say, I think we could say, as a body, that after studying this, we see that there is merit in smaller lot sizes in, as a mechanism to support more affordable homeownership. As a result, we recommend further study to see how it fits in. You know, I mean, my point is, is we've achieved, at least looking at this, if we say something to the effect that we have studied this, and this is our recommendation and our assessment.
So the great news is that there's a way to find out whether everyone agrees or not. And I weigh in as well, feeling that I would be more comfortable if this was done in a more thoughtful process as a part of the comprehensive plan, and staff came to us with recommendations, and then we're in a position to challenge those recommendations or say, we don't think you went far enough, or you went too far. But I would be more comfortable with that. So I will make a motion that the planning committee, now I'm going to pause. What is the, I guess I'd appreciate some advice on what is the most appropriate way for us to be responsive to the city council's request for legislative action that they filled out? Is that a resolution from the board, or simply could we pass a motion stating our recommendation, and that would then be conveyed, obviously to staff, but would it not, would it also be conveyed to city council?
So I believe because if the body wants to make a recommendation, that obviously makes it to city council, that was the directive, that's the body it'll go to, it should be in the form of a resolution, I think would be best practice. You could do a motion, but I think, you know, if you want to include language, you know, such as, whereas the planning commission held meetings on X day and X day, whereas the study this issue, you know, I'm making, I'm doing this on the fly, it's always tough. But, so I think it should be in the form of a resolution, doesn't have to be a complicated one, doesn't have to have a million whereas clauses, but I think it should be a resolution, something more formal for them to then, basically for Mr. Rice to then take to, basically get on council's agenda and go that route.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kettner.
I just want to make sure and clarify that we're talking about, at this point, it sounds like just the R1.0 as one part of that, and we will continue working on other things to address affordable ownership, that we will not consider this request closed by this action. Just kind of asking for that clarification.
Well, we actually, we don't have a motion, so there's no one to answer that. Whoever makes the motion would be the person to.
It sounded like you were going to make one, so.
Yeah, but I haven't. My preference would be to wrap this up. These are two unusual requests that we've had from city council, the ADU and the one having to do with smaller lot size, which I think is the reference in that. And therefore, I would like to see us make a decision and give a formal response to city council, so that then we can move on to our more traditional planning commission business. Commissioner Kettner.
Yeah, can you just clarify, can you please read that aloud? Because I did not think that the request was specifically only for R1, for smaller lot sizes.
Yep. So it says, "A request for planning commission to explore the addition of a smaller lot, single-family, and/or duplex zoning category that would create additional avenues for more affordable home ownership opportunities in Lakewood. Ideas for discussion could be smaller lot-size allowances if houses are sold for a certain AMI threshold, duplex by right if homes are sold for certain AMI thresholds, et cetera. Since planning commission has the context and the expertise for this discussion, the above ideas are just prompts for potential discussion. I realize that these may not all be viable solutions, but would appreciate the opportunity to explore them further."
Correct. And there's specific reference to AMI, and this is only one thing, and this is a big issue. And so far, all we're suggesting is that with smaller lot sizes, we kick the can down the road for at least a couple of years, because that's, you know, the process for the plan, for the comprehensive plan. And there's a lot more we can do that's in there, and I would hope that the motion would be made, that we will be fulfilling part of this request, but we will continue the discussion either at our next meeting or another date with the other ideas that have been thrown out for affordable ownership.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, I guess I'll say that I have, I do have a number of points of agreement with Commissioner Kettner, and that there's other aspects of this request we could, we could commit to discussing. You know, the suggestion I threw out this evening of adding attached homes, but not multifamily homes, to probably the R2 district is something else that I feel meets the spirit of this. We did talk this summer in one of our study sessions on this topic early on about, a little bit about the Boulder program for affordable homeownership opportunity. I feel my stance on that is it goes a little bit beyond zoning, just in the, I don't know, bureaucratic complexity and, you know, ongoing budgetary resources that Boulder expends to perpetuate that program. It goes a little bit beyond just like a sheer requirement of land use. And so Commissioner Kettner said a few minutes ago, that was something I expressed interest in, and I think I still feel that way about having such a program being a good thing. But I, upon stewing upon that longer, I, I'm just not convinced that it's within the planning commission's wheelhouse in terms of like, this is unambiguously a zoning thing, and it doesn't get into like budgetary issues that our commission does not have purview over. So we could put in a resolution that we support exploring that, but we realize that setting up those kind of programs goes beyond zoning. You know, I'll throw out another idea. I think community land trusts are a great promising model for perpetuating affordable homeownership. I'm not sure how we write a change to a zoning code to, you know, create affordable, you know, a community land trust. There has to be a community land trust organization that comes in and, you know, then creates that model by, you know, buying out some properties together or building something on property that's just otherwise zoned for, you know, a use like a single-family home, even on a small lot, or a townhome, or whatever it is that the land trust wants to build that's just otherwise allowed by zoning. I, I think it's a great idea, that I hope the city could partner with it more, but I, as always, welcome the thoughts of my fellow commissioners. I struggle to see the nexus of how we craft purely zoning rules that enactuate that. So yeah, I have agreement with Commissioner Kettner, that there's things beyond R1.0 we could discuss, but some of the things that are, I think, included in this council request are also just by their nature, maybe a little bit outside this commission's purview, and so that makes me hesitant to discuss them too much, even if they are good ideas.
I was just searching for something in our bylaws. And I have to apologize, because I have sat on so many different public boards that I can't keep all the bylaws straight. I thought, I know with other zoning boards, we had the authority to create subcommittees that perhaps could look at an issue and bring something to the full commission. I don't know if I did, I wasn't, as I quickly looked, I did not see that reference there, but is that power that we have or not?
No. And we just, we just actually explored this and created the ability for the Historic Preservation Commission to have, to create ad hoc committees, because it is not built, it has never been built into our boards and commissions, it's just now, in recent years, been of interest. So we just had to actually amend the rules and regulations for the HPC, and that went before council just a couple of months ago for approval. So we would have to do something similar if this commission wanted to have the ability to create ad hoc committees or subcommittees.
Yeah. So I'm having, I'm having the same difficulty everyone is, kind of seeing where the cohesive idea is. I had floated the idea of a general statement, but I know there's some concern that that may be too constraining, and we want to keep studying this. I have some hesitancy to have it be open-ended. So I, if we were going to do that, I would be more comfortable if we set a hard deadline for these kind of broader discussions. Commissioner Furman.
So for this item we have in front of us now, I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Buckley, we could add some more language about other things that we might support. I think perhaps putting it on agenda for a later meeting, studying some of the other concepts, even though I think we did, we did discuss it when it came to the inclusionary zoning and some of that, we discussed that before, and we ended up in that same place, which was, where, how far could we take this, since obviously a big piece of that, as it pertains to supporting homeownership, has to do with how the city deals with the money side of it. As soon as you have agreed that you support the idea of inclusionary zoning so that they are collecting money in order to support additional housing, or if you're going to force them to build affordable housing, it gets, depends on how you do it and how, like, how you drive that and what the support, the carrots are. And it seemed like we did end up in a place where we weren't sure how we could support that idea, is what I recall. But I wouldn't be opposed to the idea of putting that on as an agenda item later to come back to, perhaps closing out this issue merely with zone district recommendations as it pertains to size or changes, as we discussed, you know, saying that we support the idea of smaller lot sizes and other additional means by, anyway, I don't have the exact verbiage for the one you were talking about, but, but keeping it to those kinds of zone changes and closing this out, and then perhaps adding an agenda item to return to what mechanisms we can do to support inclusionary zoning, whether it has to do with money or required affordable units or whatever the case may be.
Commissioner Kettner.
I think that was left on.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Buckley.
Another practical question. I'm sorry, it was off. Another practical question about whatever resolution we passed to send back to council. If it's not an actionable thing for council to decide on some policy, to take some vote for some resolution themselves or some ordinance, kind of what's the point? And so you haven't made your motion yet, but with what I'm piecing together, what your motion might be, what's the actionable steps for council if we return it back in this manner, your suggestion?
So, just like the ADU, that was a request from council, give us your recommendations to make ADUs, to remove the barriers for additional ADUs. This one has to do with affordable ownership, and specifically references twice smaller lot sizes, neither one of which the council is obligated to do anything on, neither one of which staff is obligated to do anything on. So this is really about just sending our recommendation, and if we don't have a recommendation, then we can't send it. But it seemed like, based upon all the times this has been discussed, the concept of smaller lot sizes to facilitate affordable ownership is something that I thought all commissioners thought would be worth being a part of staff recommendations and analysis through the comprehensive plan. And that would resolve this request if we were to take that action, but that requires a vote of the majority. Commissioner Kettner.
You know, I'll say something, and this is a little off-topic, so you guys can have some more time to think, too. Mr. Rice? And I understand you might not know about this, because I think it was more Mr. Parker that, but with the monies for 123 that we requested, land banking was what we said we were going to do with it. So kind of, you had brought that up, and I just wanted, I was going to mention that a little later, but.
And I have a, I have a quick follow-up with that.
Oh, cool.
Yep. So just. Yep, so, just, and this is just more for the commission's, you know, information. So Amy Dietzner and other staff members did put together a proposal to secure, specifically, because there's obviously six programs under Prop 123, but the land banking money, the program received an overwhelming number of letters of intent. I think it was just, and I know these numbers aren't exactly accurate, but ballpark, I think they had something like 30, 30 to 50 some odd million dollars for the first year to give out, and they received over 300 million in requests, so what they did was they asked all, all of the people who submitted a letter of intent to specifically follow up with a few more things for their proposal, and had a list of questions. We were not selected, so after they, after they did the second round of submittals, they sent out a list, I believe they selected maybe between 10 and 15 projects total, and Lakewood's were not selected.
So does that mean we still get some of the money, we just have to find something to do with it other than the land banking, do you know?
So it means we can apply for the other programs, the other Prop 123 programs, of which several we did not actually have a specific use for. I guess our partner, Metro West Housing Solutions, had to apply for like the concessionary debt program and some other ones, but right now, we're waiting to apply, there's a next round of applications for other programming. We, basically, for the land banking, we now have to wait till 2024, basically summer of 2024, to apply for what would be, I believe it's 2025 funding, to see if we're selected.
So I meant to say we were going to have land banking, but we didn't get the grant.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to try again, but we're basically, yeah, it's not going to be a possibility.
Thank you for that update, I appreciate that.
Is your light on again? Nope? Okay. Eric, Commissioner Gribbleonis.
Thank you, Chair Kolkmeier. I guess I have a question, just in terms of process. I guess I agree with our response back regarding the small lot zone, and everything is important, and something that should be studied as part of the comp plan, seems like there's the desire to also still look at other avenues of affordable homeownership, and I guess my question is, if we send this resolution back, just talking about the validity of continued study of smaller lots, can other ideas of affordable homeownership be brought up at a later date by anyone on the commission through general business?
You know, this is something, obviously, the commission has, has had a lot of discussion on in the past, whether or not the commission, just on its own initiative, can study and send things to City Council. That's not what's before us, what's before us is their particular request. So I don't think we have an answer to that question, which is, if we answer this request, can we then subsequently, on our own, initiate something, and study it, and make recommendations? There are differing opinions on that. Commissioner O'Neal.
We could include that we would like to make additional requests as they come up in our recommendation. We could make a recommendation that we will have future recommendations.
Hang on a second. Commissioner Buckley.
I think my light was actually on from before, but I'll, I'll agree with the sentiment that, like, making a partial recommendation and saying we're still working on other ideas is something that seems viable to me, and maybe actually in line with where we're at.
Well, I would ask the commissioners, though, how do, how do you envision that happening? How many meetings would you want to commit to it? Do you think we, as commissioners, without staff assistance, are going to be able to come up with specific recommendations? I think it's been evident from this conversation, and from some of the earlier ones, that it's pretty difficult for us to do that from here. We are a body that is appointed and charged primarily with reviewing proposals from applicants and from staff that come to us. Are we equipped to ourselves, as individuals, study an issue and make recommendations without the assistance of staff? Commissioner Kettner.
Yes, that's what we just did now, so I think we showed that we are capable.
What, what have we done?
The ADUs we did without assistance of staff, correct?
We have not passed that resolution.
Correct, okay. I think we still keep trying, so my answer to your question is yes, I believe we are capable, and I think if we get some direction, yes, we can form an ad hoc committee, but one or two of us, not more than two of us, could meet together to draft something. We're not talking about drafting something, I don't think, out of the blue, I mean, so far, or when we talked about this back in July before you were on the commission, you know, we were talking about what other communities have done, so it's not like we would have to reinvent the wheel. So yes, I do think we would be capable if we had the desire. I know I would be willing to help.
Yeah, and to that point, I watched that meeting, and I have some concerns that we have not made much progress since July, because I think these are tough, complicated issues, and every time, you know, it's like one more thing comes up, I am really questioning if what we've demonstrated is that we need staff to evaluate as a part of the comprehensive plan and bring those recommendations, but there still is not a particular proposed motion on the floor.
I propose to continue this item to our next meeting, or I make a motion, excuse, did I say propose?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to continue this item to our next meeting.
And is there a second? Any discussion? Let's, I will open the voting. The motion is to continue this discussion to our next regu, next regular meeting. Cast your votes. Let's see, I think I've opened it. It looks like that motion passes five to one. So that item will be continued, and I think, Mr. Rice, I maybe already suggested that that would probably be on our next agenda, so we just have to make sure that that winds up on our next agenda. Moving on to item six, is there any general business? Commissioner Kettner.
Commissioner, I was going to wait, because Commissioner Buckley might have already, okay. I was wondering if staff, or maybe can Commissioner Buckley had any update on the schools, particularly, Emory Elementary this last week, the school district decided to either lease or sell it?
I have no update on that topic.
Okay, and I don't know, since it's Ward III, if you knew anything? No?
I don't know anything on that particular, I heard the same thing, but I, you know, I think I read about it in the media, that's all I know.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other items of general business? Before we adjourn, I would just invite commissioners, if you have any comments about how we handled public comment tonight, it is more akin to what I have done on other public bodies, where there's a little more interaction between the public, and I think that that creates a greater sense of their ability to give input in our demonstration that we're listening and paying attention, but I would invite any of you to send Mr. Rice any comments you have that he can forward on to the rest of the commissioners regarding that, or anything else about the conduct of our meetings. I would like us to see somewhat shorter meetings, because I think that a lot of times we are talking about issues that maybe we're just not yet in a position to come to conclusion on, and if that's the case, then, you know, let's figure out a process and a timetable for how to get to a place where people are comfortable to actually, you know, propose an action. With that, I appreciate all of you, and we will adjourn for the night.